Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
The Tuesday, December 18, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for being here this evening. Clerk, let's go ahead and get started and read our role, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Staley?
Here.
Brecky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Nitzert?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Tonight, to give our invocation, we have the multi-talented Ron Tottenham, author, motorcycle rider, pastor with Empire Baptist Temple. So if you'd rise for that, Pastor Tottenham will give our invocation and stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance following.
I want to say again to all of you all how much I appreciate you, give you Christmas cards. I think a lot of you, thank you for the time you give to our city. I've been all over the world. This is the greatest city in the world, has a lot to do with you and how you handle those things. And I don't care who hears that. I've lived in this city for forty-some years. Thank you from me personally to all of you. Thank you. Our Father tonight, thank you for your blessings. Thank you for this great city. Thank you for the kind of people we have on the City Commission and the mayor, who will take time out of their life to give something to this city without the largest pay in the world. I pray you'd bless them, put your hand around them, guide them in all the different decisions they have to make, that most of the time, they will honor you in everything that's to be done. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and tolerance.
All right, council, let's move on to item four, Consent Agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda or motions?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Selberg. Move to approve by Erickson, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion on that? A vote on that, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could just say a point of personal privilege, I believe it's called, could I just make a statement? I'd like to say a thank you to our city clerk, Tom Greco. As you may notice, if you've visited our meetings, our agendas have a little different look. And our city clerk met with Councilor Starr and I a few weeks ago to talk about the changes that he made, and he was really concerned about making this whole look more user-friendly for our citizens. And we suggested a few things to make it even a little bit easier to read, and he was so open to taking that in and implementing that. So I just wanted to say I really appreciate that. Merry Christmas.
I'll call for a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that's passed eight to zero. Onto our regular agenda. Any changes or motions?
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
Move to approve by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion, council? A vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that is passed eight to zero. We're at the public input portion of tonight's agenda. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than thirty minutes. Because public input for all regular agenda items will be taken, you're asked to limit your general public input to topics not appearing later on the agenda for this portion and regular agenda items. Speakers are limited to no more than three minutes unless additional time is granted by this council. So at this time, I'd like to invite members of the public forward. Clerk, please note that the time is 7:04. Good evening.
Dwayne Skipper, Sioux Falls. Your Sioux Falls average residential water and sewer bill is now in its thirteenth year of consecutive rate increases. The 200% increase since 2006 has tripled city water and sewer revenue from about $45 million to $130 million. It also tripled all bills, with the average household increase going from $247 to $743 annually. So what is there to question about this? The city has monopoly control of the water utilities that are necessary for human survival and our standard of living. For this very reason, the city has a fiduciary or trust responsibility to deliver the public utilities at the lowest possible cost and add a fair rate to bill payers. Tripling the amount charged is unethical, unfair, and unreasonable, especially with monopoly utilities that have captive customers who have no other choice other than to pay the bill. The city is treating the residents' water billing as an enterprise. The city dictates the rate increases and how the money will be spent. The majority of the profit built into water billing is being used for capacity growth. Existing city residents have been paying for twelve years and now are facing twenty more years of rate increases to pay for $260 million of new spending. There are other ways to fairly charge for worn-out pipes and new bigger pipes and plants. Over 50% of all U.S. cities with populations over 25,000 charge new customer connection fees that pay for up to 100% of the expense for capacity and infrastructure growth. Therefore, current rate payers are not subsidizing the costs associated with new growth. The city needs to rethink how it will charge residents for water treatment. As a comparison, in 2006, gasoline was about $2.50 per gallon. At the same 200% rate increase, we would now be paying $7.43 per gallon. Ask yourself, does it have something to do with the word monopoly? Thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Sandra Reynolds, and I'm owner of both the Olive Destination stores here in Sioux Falls. I'm here to ask for your help to redefine and broaden the license categories and the process. First of all, I want to thank Jamie for helping me with my wine licenses, Teresa and Janet for taking my calls and listening to my concerns and some of my suggestions. I want to thank Counselor Christine for helping me with the South Dakota Health Department and the Business Services Department. What do I do at Olive Destination? I demonstrate and educate on true extra virgin olive oils for everyday use and good health. What we make and demonstrate, we give away. We sample approximately six to nine times per year, and we are served safe. In February, I was informed we had to become a restaurant. The Health Department decided that anyone who sells prepared food and meals must become a restaurant. Olive Destination does not sell prepared foods or meals. We do not have a menu. I do not have tables or a permanent seating area. We were advised we had to put in a commercial hood and vent system costing approximately $100,000. We could not even toast a piece of bread and put our buttered olive oil on it without being a restaurant. I couldn't even slice an olive without being a restaurant. With Christine's help, we negotiated that I put in a larger exhaust fan and got a pasta cooker. I'm asking council to redefine and broaden the categories and include sampling. This will avoid confusion and misrepresentation. For example, non-food stores such as mortuaries, beauty salons, law offices, furniture stores, car dealerships, serve cookies to the public. Some of these cookies are made with raw dough. Churches have full kitchens. They do food prep and serve to the public, but they're not required to be restaurants, and they do not use certified kitchens. Schools and churches have bake sales to raise funds. They contain dairy and eggs, which are considered hazardous food products by the Health Department. Foods prepared in home kitchens and sold at bake sales and brought to potlucks. They're not required to be served safe, use certified kitchens, gloves, or nets. This is why I have brought this before the council, to have an open discussion, to clarify and avoid confusion, to create a better business environment between city and small business, and to avoid unnecessary expenses on small businesses. I am asking council to please clarify the difference between sampling and serving meals, selling prepared foods and meals versus sampling, giving away food versus sampling and selling. I thank you all for listening to me and your consideration in this matter, and if I can be of help and sit down with anyone, I would certainly be available. I want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a very prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Good evening.
Good evening. Bruce Danielson. With all the video issues that were happening today with the brand-new whoop-de-doo sire system we have, I decided I should come and just record the meeting in case anybody wants to see it later. While I was thinking about it, I remembered I bought this little camera at the city-county auction this past year, and for, I think, $10. So the city got their investment back in it, I guess, because I don't think it's ever been used. And it hadn't been used in several years, and it got me thinking about the Parks Board meetings that we had, where we had been trying to get them to record a meeting, and they said, well, they don't even have any handicams. Well, this one came off the city's asset list to be put on that sale. So I just thought I'd mention that we do find these things every once in a while, and I really would like to actually remind you all that when the city-county auction comes up in September, as it usually does every year, you all need to go and see what the waste is that goes on at this auction, and all the things that we see, and the really strange dealings that are happening during that auction. If you ever want to find out about it, all you have to do is ask me, because I've been going to them for a long time. But anyway, get back to the upgrades and everything here, where I kind of missed out on the fun and games of last week, and I understand that there was a secret media meeting that happened with the deputy chief of staff and the media in town. And, you know, I got an email some time back from the city that said I was media, and so was Scott Ayersman, and, gosh, we never got invited to any of these fancy meetings to find out what was going on. And I probably have more hours spent in here recording media and publishing it. I have almost 4,000 videos up online of local events, and, gosh, none of that seems to make any difference anymore. You know, I've kind of held back on doing a lot of things because I want to see how things are happening in this town, and I'm getting very disappointed in the activities of several people in this room and this city government as a whole. So, and I sent an email out just the other day, and I asked when the operations committee met to change the structure of the different agendas that are accomplished in this town, and I haven't heard anything. So I do appreciate the clerk sent me one email, but it didn't answer the questions I was asking. I sent another email, and I haven't heard anything back. And I would really like to have an answer to some of those questions. And then, as a quick moment, I just wanted to wish my sister in the back of the room here a happy birthday. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Good evening.
Hi, Steven Ciano. I want to say first that, obviously, I don't need the crutches today. I'm doing all right. Sometimes I got them, sometimes I don't. There's an old spinal injury that lays me up sometimes, and I'm happy when I'm able to get around better. However, I am still worried about bicycling, and I do take buses around rather than bicycle, which is my former primary mode of transportation. I used to run or bicycle just to go shopping in the next city over. However, now I have trouble walking a few blocks to the bus. And about the buses, I understand that there is an effort to get something done to improve the bus system, and I have recommended in the past that at the outer limits of the -- I don't mean a TV show, I mean of the bus routes, if we had connecting, like a loop around the city, that could be quite helpful in cutting down the amount of time to get places, and also a grid system rather than a hub system as they have now, which has been a matter of discussion in the past. Also, the bus seats, there are some problems with. You have somebody come in with a shopping cart and take up five seats. That is not fair. So if the seats were cut up, sort of even a wheelchair, an electric wheelchair, as some people use mobility assistance, that should only take up two seats. But you have the three seats at a time that go up, and that's been a problem. Also, to expand, and like I said before, years ago, people gave up on the buses and bought cars. So the other thing that I think is a good idea is about the downtown. Rather than build parking ramps for more cars to come in, improve the bus system, expand it, and limit the speed that cars could go downtown especially. Throughout the city, it could be limited to 30 miles an hour, and perhaps downtown even less, which would be an incentive for people to bicycle or walk or take public transportation. And Catherine Riffle wanted me to say that if you're not -- if there's people on the street for the holidays, shame on you. That's her attitude. It's not my way, exactly, and not--
Thanks, Steven.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Tim Stanga.
I was able to go on a ride along with Matt Tobias in my neighborhood to see what needed to be done. The gal that came up and talked about the hood, the other meeting, that's where I live, is in the hood, because that's what we call it. But he was realizing that the neighborhood is pretty bad. We've got a lot of vacant cars, a lot of buses sitting, a lot of trash. We were able to have a great conversation. He understood where I was coming from. I understood where he was coming from. He told me that he was going to put his team together and to try to canvass the neighborhood and see what they could do on getting rid of some of the rubbish, the cars, the buses, and just trying to clean up the neighborhood, because that's a big part of where you get homelessness. I had somebody living in my shed for about six months one year. Never knew about it. He slept in about a two-by-two area, and that's where he lived for six months. Didn't realize it, but I guess it happens. Then we talked about different ordinances that need to be changed. I'm hoping to be able to get rid of -- get together with some of the city council to be able to work on some of the ordinances. He said that there was a couple of them that he would back if I brought them up to be able to work with the city council and with Matt Tobias, and I'm looking forward to it. Thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
Good evening.
Sierra Bus, so Sioux Falls. Okay, so here we go with the crime here. So Assistant Chief sent me an email saying we don't have problems at 1508 Russell. Aaron George's property here. Okay, we have Mitch, the manager, selling drugs. We got the cleaner, prostitution and pimping, and selling meth. Third floor drug dealing, they're cutting screens and jumping out the back doors of the windows. On the side of the back of the building, they're selling dope. Now, I haven't been to this property because I'm still on that illegal massage and back there on 41st Street. I told Aaron George that I'd be on that property here this week live on Facebook. Now, I -- me and the police get into it all the time. I understand the problems that we have in neighborhoods, understanding that we have to get a hold of this crime here. Again, I'm gonna disagree with the chief of police when I got the records here, the call volume. The call volume is not coming from inside that motel room. It's coming from people that are on the outside catching the crime. It's coming from patrolmen that are patrolling back there. And yes, the patrolmen, I have called them, and they have told me and verified the information. So we cannot be downplaying the activity that is happening at the AGP studios. Can we hold Mr. Aaron George liable? I don't know. It's a sticky situation here on that. I had a talk with the city attorney. It was nice to talk to the city attorney, Stacy, on some code violation issues and how nuisance properties happen within the city government here, okay? We have to hold these people liable that are not calling the police within motels and hotels. When I did the motel and hotel tours, I've seen a lot. I've seen interactions with the police against the motels. I've seen it on both sides. What we need to get down to the issue is, when we have all these police calls for service, that's how much? How much is a raid when we're talking about a raid with undercover units? Twelve, $1,500, $2,000 a bust. Okay? Yes, we're gonna have drugs, but when the manager doesn't do their part, and you have inside management selling the dope, we have a problem here. Mayor, I'm gonna address this to you, please. We need to clean up AGP Studios here at 1508 West Russell Street. I'm not gonna abide by what the chief says. Look at the call volume and see for yourself. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Daryl Solberg, Sioux Falls resident, and I appreciate this opportunity to talk to you. As a concerned taxpayer of South Dakota, I've been following the news and public comments quite closely. Therefore, I stand here in strong support of Congresswoman Staley's request to the Gnome campaign to refund or to pay for the security cost of Trump being in town. Now, this was purely a campaign fundraising event. She got $500,000. We got stuck with a bill of $20,800. That's in-kind contribution, which is against the campaign laws. So I've heard the city council is now contemplating putting some regulations in order to prevent this from happening in the future. But I've also heard politicians and public officials say that we don't need more laws. We just need to enforce the ones that are in the books. Well, I would like that to happen, because South Dakota codified law 12-2720, the governing body of the county, municipality, or other public subdivision of the state may not expend or permit the expenditure of funds for the purpose of influence the nomination or election of a candidate. Now, I also read that the chief of staff said that we have money for those. How far in advance did they budget that for the Trump campaign to come here, because that was basically a last-minute thing? So I feel very strongly that we need to take this under consideration, because I don't care who you supported. If you want to give a private contribution to the candidate, so be it. But if you're strongly saying we need to give them a campaign contribution, take it out of your pocket and pay the city. I feel very strongly that there was definitely favoritism here. Like a guy once told me, do the right thing because it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Daryl. Thank you, sir. Yeah. Anyone else tonight? Clerk, next agenda item, please.
Item 24, transfer of 2019 retail liquor license for Nelson Landing Incorporated Falls Landing Bar and Grill, 200 East 8th Street, to Village River Group LLC, Village on the River, 140 East 10th Street, effective on January 7, 2019. CUP not required. Pending final inspections per Fire, Health, and Building Services. 25, new 2018/19 retail malt beverage license for Nelson Landing Incorporated Falls Landing Bar and Grill, 200 East 8th Street, effective January 7, 2019. CUP not required. 26, request to include video lottery terminals with the new 2018/19 retail malt beverage license for Nelson Landing Incorporated Falls Landing Bar and Grill, 200 East 8th Street, effective January 7, 2019. 27, new 2019 retail wine license for Nelson Landing Incorporated Falls Landing Bar and Grill, 200 East 8th Street, effective January 7, 2019. CUP not required. 28, special one-day malt beverage and one-day wine license for Butterfly House and Aquarium, 4320 South Oxbow Avenue, for a networking event on January 17, 2019. 29, special one-day liquor license for Butterfly House and Aquarium, 4320 South Oxbow Avenue, for a fundraiser on February 8, 2019.
Hi, Jamie.
Jamie Palmer with Licensing. Items 24 through 29. I would be happy to answer any questions if you have them. I don't really have any information to add.
Good. Thank you. Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items? Counselors, you have questions for Jamie on any of these?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Starr.
Thank you. Jamie, is the applicant for 24 here? I guess I have some questions. If you don't mind.
If you could let us know who you are, just for--
My name is Seth Sweeney. I am the regional manager for Lamont Companies. So I'll be in charge of operations once the development is open and under operation.
My question is, is that when you transfer a license, you have to use it at least two months out of the following next two years or 24 months. I'm trying to do the timing in my head of the parking ramp is still six months away from being completed before you can start construction on the new project, which the estimate was about 18 months. So my math is getting to 24 rather quickly. Are we transferring this license early and earlier than -- are you gonna get two months in in the next 24 months, I guess, to simplify the question?
Yep, that's correct. In visiting with construction and everything, you're looking about 12 to 18 months is the kind of the window for construction. So I've been assured that, yes, the license will be in active use within two years as required. That answers my question.
Yes, counselor. Any other questions, council, on any of these items?
I'll move approval of items 24 through 29.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to approve these items. Any further discussion? A vote on these, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that is passed eight to zero. Next item.
Second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the Code of Ordinances of the city by revising Title VII Traffic Code and Chapter 95 Parks and Recreation to provide for the operation of e-bicycles in the same manner as bicycles and to provide for certain pedestrian movements at controlled intersections.
Hey, Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Kellie Maris with Parks and Recreation. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you over the past few weeks about ordinance revisions that would introduce Class 1 e-bikes to sidewalks and the bike trail system. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Sam Trevilcock and Keith Allenstein for their work in putting these ordinance revisions together. I have a very brief presentation for you tonight, and want to make just a few points and maybe clarify some things, and also talk about a few things that may have been left out to this point. Our bike trail system is a multi-use trail system. As you can see in this picture, we have bicyclists of all age and abilities, people who walk dogs, just general walkers, people who push kids in strollers, rollerbladers, runners, and people with mobility issues who use mobility devices to enjoy our trail system. This multi-use trail system is also a very busy trail system. Over the last three years, our trail counters that we have in different locations around the bike trail system have registered more than 2.7 million hits on the trail system. So again, it's a very busy trail system, and again, its original purpose is for recreation and fitness. Just another quick, brief overview of the classes of e-bike system as defined in federal code. It puts the definition of three different accepted classes of e-bikes. This language was used to help draft the ordinance language. It is before you for your consideration. Again, Class 1 e-bikes are the class of e-bikes that we are proposing through these ordinance revisions. It's not that we are leaving anything else out. It bike trail system or on city sidewalks. Another brief overview of the ordinance revisions defines a Class One e-bike, defines cycle track, provides exclusive use of bicycle lanes for bicycles and Class One e-bikes, provides the same allowance and requirements for bicycles as it would for Class One e-bike users. Adds definition of recreation trail system to the Parks and Recreation, Chapter ninety-five. Again, this definition lives in other sections of ordinances would mirror that definition into the Parks and Recreation ordinance. Allows Class One e-bike access to bike trail system, cycle track, and sidewalks. Does support the health and wellness initiatives of Parks and Recreation and the Health Department to keep people moving and requiring people, trail users, to exercise on the trail system. These ordinance revisions also maintain the speed limit throughout the trail system. The current city ordinance places a fifteen mile an hour speed limit in city parks, and while we consider all of our trail system to be part of our park system, not all of the bike trail system lies within a city park. So this language would be cleanup language to include all of the bike trail system as part of the park system in establishing the speed limit. Also, as part of these ordinance revisions, pedestrian movements at controlled intersections are being addressed and cleaned up so that the safety measures that we have in place at controlled intersections, especially the pedestrian lead interval, would be in concert with our city ordinances. Again, I thank you for the time and discussion over the past few weeks, and we would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks, Kelly. Is there anyone from the public here to speak on this item this evening? Well, Mayor, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, nice to see you. Happy Tuesday. Members of the city council, ladies and gentlemen, for the record, my name is Rick Knobe, K-N-O-B-E. My mailing address is 5808 West Fifteenth Street, although a lot of time I spend on a boat and far away from here, but I'm in town now and I wanted to be here for part of this conversation. For the record, I'm probably one of the last people alive or standing that were in City Hall at the time that the recreational trails in the Big Sioux River Greenway was created. My signature is on the first plan that we put together to create what is now probably one of the crown jewels of the city of Sioux Falls, one of my proudest accomplishments in my life, and fortunately had a whole bunch of other people supporting us along the way that made it work. I appreciated the staff person's comment about this being recreational trail. I know over the years it's gone back and forth between called bicycle trail, recreational trail, bike trail, bike trail. But it is in fact, was the original intent, was this is for recreation. This is not part of the transportation system of the city of Sioux Falls. It's not a conditioning track for people to go as fast as they want, wherever they want, throughout the system. It's for everybody to use, little old ladies in sneakers, little children just learning how to ride their bicycles, and yes, people who ride their bikes for transportation and people who ride their bikes for getting in shape and doing things. But it is a recreational trail. I like the part of the ordinance that spells out the speed limit. I think that's long overdue, and I appreciate that that's included here. I hope it is posted on the recreational trails at numerous places. I would also like to suggest that you add a couple of other signs, such as please pedal and walk safely, and please be courteous at various times throughout. We've all probably had experiences on the trail, I know I have, whether I was walking or riding my recumbent, where courtesy and common sense and safety were not exactly exhibited by some of the people on the trail, and I think we need to constantly deal with that. In the few moments I've got left, e-bikes, it's a great euphemism. E-bikes are actually motors. They technically are motorbikes, and I know that they're not gas-powered, but they are in fact motors, and that's what helps propel them. I don't like that part of it, and if I had a vote, I would vote against it. But I would put a section in here that deals with if somebody needs an e-bike to be able to get around on the recreational trails and their doctor says you need this, I'm all for it, whether it's a Class One or a Class Two, I'm wide open to that. But as on the basis of being an old guy and a guy who was here when we first created it, the last thing I want is make it easy. It's for recreation, it's for fun, and that's the way I'd like us to keep it. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions if they come up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jason Muller. I am a pastor here in town and an avid cyclist, and I just want to thank Mayor and the council for even addressing this issue. I want to especially thank Sam Trevilcock for his efforts and the Parks Department, and especially my dear friend Rick Knobe, who is part of this process that we get to be part of today because, you know, we owe Rick and the group of men who've had the foresight to see what needed to be done for our recreation. And I'm in agreement, I'm pretty excited that we're gonna have this opportunity to have e-bikes on the trail because I want to be an advocate for all cyclists and for everybody having an opportunity. So I'm gonna tell two quick, short stories and leave it at that. So I started cycling about ten years ago, and my first ten miles, I thought I was gonna physically collapse because I was a forty-year-old overweight businessman who now is a very avid bicyclist who can ride far in excess of even a hundred miles in a day, and I lost a lot of weight. It was an exciting opportunity, and the fact is that I got to use the bicycle trail to be part of that. Well, I'm advocating for the E-Class One and Class Two bikes simply because I know that if we can get more people on a bicycle, then there are gonna be more cyclists in our community. We also know that more cyclists in our community is gonna reduce traffic in our communities because now they have an option. Because today, before we did all of this, we wouldn't have an option but to drive a car or walk. There would be no real option for getting around our community because it's just the way it's designed at the moment. So I want to advocate for the two because I think the E2 bikes are going to offer the opportunity for the elderly to get on and ride a bicycle because they're not gonna have the strength or the power, so that's why they need the pedal assist as well as a throttle assist to get started. Because once you get started on an E-Class Two bike, once you start pedaling, there's a limit. You're only gonna go twenty miles an hour, but we also know that most of the elderly who are riding their Class Two cycles right now on the bike trail probably ride about six to eight miles an hour. So I want to tell a short story. My mom's seventy-five years old, and before I finish my story, I'm prepared to accept a ticket if you want to give me one, but I took my mom down to the bicycle trail and put her on a Class One e-bike. And my mom had the best time of her life because she hadn't ridden a bike in over fifty-five years. She was able to pedal and she was able to get it going, but you know the thing that she struggled with the most was the fact that she couldn't push the bike hard enough to get it going. And if I had a throttle for her, she would have been able to get it going on her own and actually make that choice to do that, have an E2 bike. And I wish she lived here because she lives all the way in New Jersey, and they don't have anything like what we have here in the city. So the one other thing I want to share...
Jason, thanks for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that this citizen's allowed to speak for two more minutes.
Wow. Can you get it done in two minutes?
Thank you very much. So she had an incredible time doing it, and I really feel like if we allow people to have these E2 bikes, we're gonna get more cyclists, more people active, which is gonna have a direct impact on Medicare for the state. I mean, the reality is, most people won't ride a bike because it's too difficult to get started. But if we can give them the opportunity to get started like I took ten years ago, or some of the other people in this community that have started to ride the bike, who are now looking for opportunities to do something, and I want to go back to this recreational trail. If we don't allow E2 bikes to be on the recreational trail, how are they gonna learn how to ride a bicycle safely? I think that's one of the problems that we have with the E2 bikes is that we're saying, hey, we want you to go out there and recreate, we want you to do this, but if we tell them they can't do it on the sidewalk or they can't do it on the bicycle trail, they'll never get the confidence and the courage to ride it down our city streets. And ultimately, that's where all cyclists need to be. So thank you very much for the additional time.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone else here to speak on this item? Evening.
Hi, Stephen Ciano again. About riding a bicycle, as I said, I've been, in such physical condition, it's been difficult for me, and I welcome the idea of having a motor assist, and if that requires a throttle, certainly. But there seems to be the attitude that a bicycle is a recreational vehicle. I see it as engineers recognize the most efficient form of transportation, four times as efficient as walking, I believe, is how it goes. So I do encourage promoting the healthful use of such vehicles for transportation as well as recreation in all places. And once again, I repeat about the lowering the speed limit downtown would encourage that. And certainly, no, we don't need people going too fast on the bike path. That could truly be a hazard, so posting signs, I think, is a good idea. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak on this item? Come forward, please. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Al Christiansen, and I prepared this. So I wear a helmet and I think I bike responsibly. When I'm by Falls Park or Spencer Park, anywhere where there's a lot of pedestrian or bike traffic, I slow down. Out north or on the west side, traffic is down and I pick up speed. I usually plan my route on these open areas that have tailwind, and you know we have a lot of wind here, so twenty miles an hour on the north or west side is normal. I agree that there needs to be common sense, and I want to thank the mayor. I've been using the bike trail since I was twelve, running, walking, pushing strollers, walking my dog. It's about common sense. I'd like to see open bike trails, and that's for those of us that want to push it on the north end safely. I think these gentlemen in blue have more important things to do than enforce a fifteen mile an hour speed limit out by the airport. So I'm also in agreement that Class Two e-bikes are going to be good. Restricting, I'm for open bike trails, open recreational trails, and that includes those of us that want to push it on the north side and those that need to use the Class Two e-bikes. So I just wanted to say that.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on this item? Good evening.
Good evening. Jaren Dewitt. I've emailed all of you personally and given my story when it comes to e-bikes and my thoughts and feelings on that, but I just wanted to thank you guys all for your time in putting effort into this. Of course, thank you to Mayor Knobe for the dream and passion behind that. But when you think about you guys' time, the time of Sam, the time of Kelly, the time that a cyclist have put into this, I want you to think about that when we talk about going back to revisit for Class Two. We've put the time and effort into this at this point, and so I think this is the right time to just wrap both Class One and Two in there rather than having to repeat the cycle down the road. I think Counselor Starr has a good idea that I heard last week with enforcing a saddle and operative pedals, and that helps define and keep out those other things that could be used on that recreational trail. And I'm in agreement that it shouldn't. When it comes to speed, remember that the Class One and Class Two are both assistive up to twenty miles an hour. They don't go over that with assistance. And as many of us know, a standard bicycle, you can get to go much more than twenty miles an hour. So I think the speed concern of Class One, Class Two shouldn't be a factor in that decision. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jaren. Anyone else here to speak on this item? Counselors, you have questions for Kelly on this? Counselor Staley?
Can I make some comments right now? Or do you want to wait? Okay.
Staff questions, and then we're gonna motion for...
Well, I will, okay. Question, Kelly? And this is just a clarification question because I've been contacted by some people who are under the misinformation that they're gonna have to rent these from the city. So just to clarify for the public, this would be a bike that they would purchase and own privately.
That is correct.
So the city's out of it when it comes to providing it. Thank you.
I'll look for a motion on this. Do you have a question for Kelly? Counselor Recky?
I've got a question. Kelly, I've, I'm, earlier, I mean, it's been the recommendation from staff to just, you know, pass what's before us, which is the Class One, and then there's, you know, now there's discussion about the Class Two. Can you give me, you know, a little more information about how you looked at that and why it's important to you, or is it still important to you that we limit it to Class One? Or are you more open-minded to the two based on the proposal that's in front of us with that new definition?
Well, I like to think that we always have an open mind, but the proposal is for the Class One. As I'd mentioned before, this is a very big step, allowing an able-bodied person a motorized vehicle on the bike trail. So something that's a pedal assist still requires the user to exercise, for exercise and fitness in our recreation trail. So we are still advocating for the Class One. Where we found a lot of our information, looking and doing our research, the draft legislation that has been proposed leaves Class Two up to local authority. So as states are drafting this legislation, they're leaving Class Twos out. So there's gotta be something to it there, too, as to why they're doing it, and there's a lot of communities and other places that don't allow Class Two. As we've mentioned, we think this is a good first step to allow just Class One. Again, we can always see where it goes from there, but yeah, we feel Class One is the right approach to start this endeavor.
Thank you.
Other questions for Kelly? Counselor Staley?
Kelly, how often do you hear about people having collisions or mishaps on the bike trail?
We do hear about it when it does happen, especially if there's a police report involved, but it's something that I wouldn't say happens daily, but does happen regularly throughout the summer.
What would the types of things be?
Well, the most recent event that I know of is two cyclists ran into each other. Both of them admitted to going at an excessive speed when they collided, and I believe both of them were transported to the hospital.
Do you ever hear about people getting run into that are walking, pedestrians?
Yes, we, I've actually had a staff member several years ago who was running on the bike trail by Falls Park and was run over by a cyclist.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Kelly? Move approval, Nitzert.
Second, Erickson.
To approve by Nitzert, seconded by Erickson. Counsel discussion. Counsel Staley.
I got a phone call, and then we all got an email from a Phil Schmidt at George Boom Funeral Home. He couldn't be here tonight. But Phil brought up some things, and so I apologize, Counselor Sol, that I didn't get this to you earlier, but I'm gonna show it on the overhead here. But I am so appreciative to our department head, Don Kearney, for responding because I put out some questions to him, and the first one was, is there going to be a speed limit on the bike trail? And so as you see here, he said, thanks for the question. The ordinance will create a uniform speed limit of fifteen miles per hour on the bike trail. Currently, it is already fifteen miles other places in city parks. The other thing that the citizen was asking about, and I absolutely agree with this, is that those speed limits, if we could leave that up for just a minute longer, thank you, is a request, and I see our former mayor, or our mayor, or mayor in historical terms, Rick Knobe, said, however, whatever the term is for that, but that we need to have more signage on the bike trails, and so Don Kearney so graciously said we can post a speed limit on our trail information kiosks we have throughout the trail system because they were gonna be replaced anyway. I also think having some kind of a speed sign that we would have on the roadway fifteen miles per hour would be wonderful. And again, as we just heard from Kelly, the last thing we want is for someone with small children or an elderly person out walking or somehow meandering on there to be run into by this kind of a bike or any bikes at all. And the other thing that was brought up is that could we have an increased, and here's the kiosk that Director Kearney said will include that information, but also it was suggested that we could have an increased bike patrol from, whatever, what do we call those things? Kelly, can you tell us, are they called bike police? Park, okay, maybe get a few extra people out there to make sure when these things are introduced that we just keep things under control, but of course, we want to keep people safe. So that's my two cents on that.
I would move to amend Sections 1 and 8 by replacing the e-bicycle definitions with the following. E-bicycle: a wheeled conveyance having a saddle and fully operable pedals for human propulsion, and two tandem wheels or two parallel wheels, and one forward wheel, and two of which are not less than 12 inches in diameter, that is designed to be operated by human power with the assistance of an electric motor that has a power output of not more than 75, or 750 watts, that I is capable of propelling the wheeled conveyance at a speed of no more than 20 miles an hour with or without pedaling, and two disengages or ceases to function when the brakes are applied.
Second, Staley.
All right. Motion by Counsel Star on that and seconded by Staley. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess one of the reasons that I brought this was from a lot of different input that I've received. And really, I was going to read the Dewitt's email and share it with you tonight, and I'm glad your daughters are here learning this process. I know you're bored out of your minds right now, and I think most of the other people in the room are, too, but someday you'll remember this and it'll be hopefully a good experience. But I was going to read the whole thing, but there's one line that really stood out to me as part of their email, and they said, to give people an opportunity to enjoy our gorgeous trail system with dignity. And that's really what my amendment's trying to propose here tonight, is that we're going to allow people the dignity to use our bike trail and to continue to use just an incredible asset of our community. There's so many times when, as you get older or you have medical conditions, that you can't keep up with the rest of the family, that you have to sit on a bench and wait for the rest of the family to ride the trail, or worse yet, you don't feel like you could go because you can't make it back up a hill or to navigate it, or you're afraid you'll get too far. And most often, and in my case, it's probably one of my biggest sins, is that sin of pride, where you're just not willing to take the risk that you can't do it and that you can't keep up with the rest of the family. If we're going as far as Class I, I agree with Mr. Maris. I think he's exactly right, and Director Kearney's made this point to me, is that if it's a Segway-type vehicle where you're just jumping on something and you're going for a ride on the bike trail or on the recreation trail, that's not the intent of what we're trying to do tonight. I know with the research of looking into what happens in Des Moines, Iowa, Minnesota, and some of the surrounding states, is why we put it in the amendment, is that it requires a saddle and a fully operable pedals for the amendment. So, it is like a Class I with the addition of the seat and the pedals, and so there is the ability to pedal and be part of it. If it was just a chance to ride around the trail, I would be totally opposed to the Class II. So, I think this is in addition to how the Parks Department has defined or the federal government's defined Class II. Again, the whole intent of what I'm trying to accomplish is the most amount of people with dignity to be able to use our park and use our recreation trail. So, I hope you would support this as part of it, of not going too far, not easing into what we're trying to do, but I think this does allow us at the same time to ease into it and allow as many people to use the trail and get out there and maybe the, take on what the pastor said and lose a little weight like we could all do by the time we're done. So, thank you for letting me bring this.
Thank you, Counsel Star. Other discussion, Counsel Knightzert?
Yeah, you know, this has been a tough one. I've really been kind of thinking about this one, and this is a very narrowly tailored amendment. I think it would only probably allow a Class II e-bike, so I, you know, I don't think there's an issue there. The thing that I keep thinking about, which is making this really tough, is, you know, the e-bike is a little different, but there's this philosophical line that I keep thinking about, which is, I get it that, and I've been on a Class I e-bike, and so I'm familiar enough with e-bikes now, but, and I get it that people would technically usually use a Class II just to get going. You're not going to just use it just to ride around the trail. Now, that being said, there's just this line that we're looking at crossing, which would be, it'd be the first time you would allow a device that would propel you with no human effort without a handicap and a reasonable accommodation. So, it is a big deal, and that's the struggle. And I get it, one could argue, yes, it's different because it's an e-bike and it has a saddle, but I still kind of keep going in circles where I'm going, okay, maybe it doesn't go that far on a battery now, but batteries get better. Next thing you know, you'll be able to ride for four hours on a battery, and somebody might. I mean, you know, you couldn't necessarily stop that. So, I still am trying to, and maybe somebody can help me with this, how would I allow this but then say, all of these other devices that I don't even know about yet, including segways and everything else, how do I say no to those but I say yes to this? That's where I continue to get hung up. So, but I think it's a very, very good discussion. There's very good arguments on both sides, which is why it's been tough. Thanks.
Counsel Kylie?
Thank you. And while I do appreciate the intent of the amendment, I would like to basically take out the Class I for a spin for a year, see how that actually works out. And believe me, I am sensitive to mobility issues and individuals that have mobility issues, and I do know, and be aware that I'm not talking about individuals that meet ADA requirements because they're already factored into this equation. But I would like to see how the Class I works out before we proceed with the Class II. I do share some of the concerns that Counselor Knightzert has mentioned, you know, so that's why I think it might be best to let's actually test the system for a while before we proceed. And incidentally, this is not an issue just only Sioux Falls, South Dakota is dealing with, but this is a national issue. As a matter of fact, I contacted a friend of mine who happens to serve on the board of the Governor's Highway Safety Association just this past Thursday and asked him, what can you tell me about eBay or e-bikes? Not eBay, maybe you could buy one on eBay. But anyway, he did get back to me right away. He says, well, we're actually in a board meeting in Pittsburgh, and he took a snapshot of the agenda, 11 o'clock, e-bikes. And he says it's been an issue nationwide, just cautioned, basically, he didn't tell me what to do, that's not his role, but just said, suggested that maybe moving cautiously in the future would be a good way to approach this, because this isn't really a new issue. I mean, we've had gasoline-powered mopeds for many, many years, pedaled mopeds that created all sorts of traffic, safety-related issues until they really got a handle on it. And sometimes our technology outpaces our ability to establish policies and procedures, and so I'm just thinking, while I sometimes even wonder if we should go the Class I, I'm willing to try that and see how it goes, but I think I would caution us to moving forward beyond that point. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Sale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might be the only one in this room that has only rode a bike once in the last 40 years, so I come at this from a little different standpoint. I was around when Mayor Nobe and our forefathers put in the bike trail, and it was for recreation. So, as I've talked to the public about this, I've got recommendations from everything, from no, don't allow any motorized bicycles, yes, allow everything to go, and everything in between. And one of the things that's been consistent through there has been the speed limit, that if it is a recreation trail, it's not to, it's not to get in shape to play flag football, it's for recreation, and especially those people with younger children. Counselor Star, I think this is a very well-thought-out and well-drafted amendment. I will tell you that I'm not there yet. I'm barely there for e-bikes to start with, just barely there. So, if it goes well, and I'm sure we'll get a recommendation from the Parks Board next year if it's approved, I will be the one to second your amendment next year if it comes on, but as of right now, I'm not there for the Class II.
Counsel Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Had a nice conversation with Counselor Star yesterday. I appreciate him reaching out to discuss this amendment. I think it certainly has some merit, and it's definitely worthy of bringing up in our discussion, and I think it is a good discussion. I like your examples that you brought up, and we discussed a couple of different things regarding this, and you made a good point on a couple or two scenarios where it would make sense and be helpful. So, my concern with it is, like a lot of things that are well-intentioned, is that it can be stretched and maybe abused and get away from the intent there, where, again, I think it comes down to me, we're a part of all this, with all this, exercise has to be a part of this, pedaling does have to be a part of, you have to pedal first and have some assistance with it, and again, if I'm wrong, maybe, but this would allow something with just, you wouldn't necessarily have to pedal. Motorized would be allowed without pedaling if I'm, if our discussion is what I'm remembering correctly. So, anyway, good discussion. I get the merit. I think I'm kind of falling in line with what we're hearing again so far, maybe to kind of start with step one here. Let's take it from there, see how it goes, revisit this as we move down the road here a bit, but I do appreciate the thought behind it. I get it, and thank you for reaching out in the conversation.
I'm going to call for vote on the amendment, please.
Counselmember Sale?
No.
Star?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
No.
Erickson?
No.
Kylie?
No.
Knightzert?
No.
All right, that amendment fails, six to two. We're back to the original motion that's on the floor. Further discussion on that? Counsel Erickson?
Just one of the, I need to just share where I'm at on this, and I really align with Counsel Sale that this really challenged me a little bit, because when you look at our recreation trail, anytime you have anything that allows extra help or whatever, it challenges me, and it's taken me a long time to get okay-ish with even an e-bike one, not to sound like a total fuddy-duddy, but it's just, it's just where I'm at with that. I'm willing to give that a shot, see where it goes, and see what can happen. One of the things that I keep hearing with, and I know we're past the e-bike two conversation, but one of the things I keep hearing is, is those that really, really need it, you know, that 75-year-old person that really, really needs that help and that extra push. At some point, I would like to see something done sooner than later that allows that person the ability to do it. Somebody like myself shouldn't be able to do that. It's really for those that still need to be outside and just get that extra help. I would like to see something like that in the future, making it really specific and tailored to those that need that extra help versus someone that can just afford it. So, I will support it, but it's challenging me.
Counsel Staley?
Kelby, if you could come up for a minute. One of the, I had the same concerns initially when this was being proposed, however, my understanding now, and we'll clarify this, is that these bikes are capped at 20 miles per hour. Is that correct?
The assist is capped at 20 miles.
Okay, the assist, so that, whether it was that assist, Counsel, so my challenge here is that how fast can a person riding a traditional bike go?
Well, it would depend on the person's ability, but yeah.
30?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so, case in point, we already have some dangerous situations out there, and there's a speed issue without these e-bikes. The e-bikes, actually, their ability is going to be held down, right?
That's my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Kylie?
Just one other item that I, and I'm going to just kind of piggyback off of what Counsel Erickson had mentioned, because I had it in my notes and I failed to follow my own notes. Mayor Nobe had actually addressed it as well, and we had had a nice discussion on this particular topic, and one of the things, once we do give this a test ride and see how it goes, especially for the individuals that have temporary needs due to surgeries or accidents or based on other needs, if it can be demonstrated, that maybe we consider initiating a permit process. It doesn't open it up for just absolutely everybody and the potential abuses that Counselor Selberg alluded to, but it does take into that ability or possibility that others in need could enjoy the e-bike on our trail system, too. So, I am open to that, and I will vote for this here tonight, waiting to see just how it shakes out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'm glad that we've had this discussion. I think we've picked up some issues with the trail as well, that I think the Parks Department has received some really good feedback from the community, whether it's the grade of hills and the speed that's on the trail and being able to take a recreation trail and being able to share it with walkers and people with their pets, as well as people who are on bikes and those crazy rollerblade people that have their arms and legs going all over the place when you try to pass them as you're going down the trail, and how we can all coexist with it. And I encourage the Parks Department, hopefully, to take some of this positive feedback that we've heard from the community and their concerns, as well as, you know, at some point we widen the trail or whatever it takes to make it better, because it is, I know, thank you for that grimace in the front row. I appreciate that. Whatever we do to make the trail better as we move forward, it's not just the e-bikes, but it's the continuing message of that we've got some really great things in Sioux Falls, and this trail is one of the many great things, that the public health and concern of recreation is an important part of it. So, this exercise has been really good when it comes to not only the e-bikes, but the issues that are on the trail and maybe the issue of how many Parks officers we do have, and as those things come up, whether they patrol our libraries and the trails and the other duties that they have in the other parks as well. So, I've really enjoyed this discussion, and I've learned, like Counselor Knightzert, a lot about e-bikes and probably more than I'll ever want to know, and other than knowing that I need to be on my bike more. Thank you.
I'm going to call, Counsel Brecky?
Just briefly, I want to thank Mayor Rick for coming tonight and sharing with us as well. I wanted to tiptoe into this as well, just because the whole idea of motorized, just the word motorized, it just kind of, you know, has a chilling effect on me, and yet, the benefits that these bikes have for those, that aging population, I think is a baby step I want to take, but I want to proceed very cautiously with this as well, because I don't want to ruin a good thing. So, I will be voting for it tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. I'd like to call for a vote on this, please.
Counselmember Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 31, set a date of second reading for Wednesday, January 2, 2019. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the northeast corner of North Marion Road and West Fifth Street from the O Office District to the S1 General Institutional District, number 9453-2018, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval, eight to zero.
Hey, Jason?
Hey, good evening. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application, and the owner is The Banquet. It's located at the northeast corner of North Marion Road and West Fifth Street. It's roughly 2.34 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is The Banquet is looking at constructing a roughly 6,700 square foot west-side location. This facility will serve meals, also have area for preparation, and then also have area for storage.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, questions for Jason? Is there a motion on this?
Move approval?
Second, Sale.
All right, we have a motion to set a date of second reading for January 2 by Counselor Selberg, seconded by Sale. Any other discussion? A vote on that, please.
Counselmember Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item.
Set a date of second reading for Wednesday, January 2, 2019. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 414 South Lindale Avenue from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 9541-2018, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval, eight to zero.
The applicant and owner here is Tom Reese. It's located at 414 South Lindale Avenue, just south of West 12th Street. It's about 0.14 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant currently has a single-family house on a lot that's less than 50 feet, and then he is looking at constructing an addition to the backside of the house and then also moving on a detached garage.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on that topic? Counselors, do you have questions for Jason or motions to make?
Move to set the second reading for Wednesday, January 2.
Second.
Okay, the motion by Erickson, seconded by Sale on that. Any discussion? A vote, please.
Counselmember Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item thirty-three.
Set a date of second reading for Wednesday, January second, 2019. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at the southwest corner of East Sixty-Ninth Street and Bonson Avenue from the O Office District to the R S Single Family Residential Suburban District, number ninety-five seventy-one dash twenty-eighteen, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval, eight to zero.
The applicant and owner here is Dana Iverson. It's located at the southwest corner of East Sixty-Ninth Street and South Southeastern Avenue, just east of the Roundabout. It's about four acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing a future place of worship on the four acres.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on that topic? Counselors, questions or motions? Move approval?
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion to set a date of second reading for January two by Selberg, seconded by Erickson. Discussion? A vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Knightsert? Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item.
Set a date of second reading for Wednesday, January second, 2019. An ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at the southwest corner of East Fourteenth Street and South Sixth Avenue from the RT one Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT two Town Home Residential Traditional District, number ninety-five seventy-five dash twenty-eighteen, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval, eight to zero.
The applicant and owner here is Alan Neas. It's located at the southwest corner of East Fourteenth Street and South Sixth Avenue. It's roughly point-three-four acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at keeping the existing converted house on the lot and then constructing an additional concrete parking area for that existing house. And then he was looking at splitting the east portion of the lot off and constructing a twin home that will face East Sixth Street.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors' questions for Jason or motions? Move to set a date of second reading for Wednesday, January two, 2019. Knightsert?
Second, Erickson.
Okay, motion by Knightsert, seconded by Erickson. Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I can, Jason, if, pull the, yeah, the lot plan up. Am I just getting confused by all the measurements and the lines or is this really packing it in pretty tight on the amount of space that's there?
It's getting pretty tight in there. We have worked with the applicant. He'll meet all the setbacks and stuff. The real problem with the lot is that existing house is kind of located in a rough portion of the lot. It's right in the middle. The applicant says that the house is in pretty good condition, so there's no real point in kind of scraping it clean and constructing a couple of twin homes down there. So, we kind of worked with him to be able to try and get something on that east side of the lot and kind of do a little bit of infill development, so.
I'm good with, you know, it makes sense to try to, to build as many affordable houses as we can or accessible houses, to use the right terminology, but it just feels pretty tight. So, I can't wait to hear from the applicant at second reading.
Other questions for Jason or discussion, counsel? If not, I'd ask for a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item thirty-five, a resolution approving the collective bargaining contract for police officers and sergeants Sioux Falls Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number One, L.C.
Evening, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Bill O'Toole from Human Resources. This item in front of you tonight is to address an imposed contract, which would be a two-year contract between the city of Sioux Falls and the Fraternal Order of Police. As you know, the city of Sioux Falls commenced labor negotiations and we met six different times between July and September of this year. The parties reached an agreement with respect to the non-economic issues. However, we could not ultimately come to an agreement over the economic packages. The city and union just fundamentally disagreed over how police officers and sergeants should be compensated. As you recall, earlier this year, the city released a compensation and benefit study conducted by Seagull Waters Consulting wherein the results of that study revealed that the compensation for police officers and sergeants were in fact market-competitive. Now, the city's last best offer, which is contained in this agreement, included a cost-of-living increase of two-point-five percent for 2019 and three percent for 2020. And you will call that as the same package that was offered to the other two respective unions and it was adopted earlier this year. In addition, each member of the Sioux Falls Department's Detective Bureau would receive a five-hundred-dollar incentive payment annually upon conclusion of one year in service in that bureau for 2019 and 2020. And whenever the city engages in these discussions and we're looking at issues of inflation moving forward, we use the Consumer Price Index for all urban areas or the CPIU put out by the Bureau of Labor Statistics to help us identify what that number should be. And at the beginning of 2018 and in January, the CPIU was running at two-point-one percent and it moved up to two-point-nine percent in June and July. It dropped back to two-point-three percent in September. And as of the last month reporting in October, it was two-point-five percent. Now, the city submitted its last best offer in September and upon receiving that last best offer, the union did not respond to the last best offer. Instead, they inserted their right to request a meeting with the city council, which occurred on October second. It's important to note that since the September meeting, the city and the FOP had not met for any active negotiations. It was on October twenty-fifth that the union's attorney, Mr. Wilka, notified the city's negotiating team that the membership in fact voted on that last best offer and they rejected that offer in a vote of two-oh-nine to ten. I do want to talk real briefly about the concept of last best offer because it does have significance in the collective bargaining process. It signifies to the other party that we were in fact completed with our bargaining and our last off, last best offer was on the table. To return to the bargaining table after last best offer would render the last best offer meaningless. And once the members rejected the city's offer during the vote, we were effectively at an impasse. The only issue remaining for us at that point was one of process and one of procedure. Either the city or the union could have officially declared an impasse and invited the South Dakota Department of Labor to intervene with conciliation and fact-finding. On November twenty-sixth, we were notified that the union did not intend to seek the assistance of the Department of Labor for that purpose. That was also a significant point in the process. And the reason that is, is because under the South Dakota statute, it says that a public employer can then unilaterally impose the terms of its last best offer where a legitimate impasse exists. Given the impasse over the economic packages, the city is moving forward in a manner allowable under state law and is asking the council to approve imposing the terms of the city's last best offer, which was bargained for in good faith at the bargaining table. If approved, the terms of that agreement could go into effect by the first pay period, which is January fourteenth, and the terms of those, of that last best offer could be implemented and in place, just like the other labor contracts with the city of Sioux Falls. And let me conclude, just a couple of other comments. I think there were some misperceptions out there about the role of the mayor and whether or not he participates in active negotiations. And I just want to address that he does not do that, nor his prior mayors. So, that was not an uncommon thing whatsoever. The last point I just want to make is that the contract itself is obviously attached and can be viewed. We've also attached a summary document that tries to condense all the changes of the non-economic conditions as well as the economic conditions for ease in reviewing those changes. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks. And I know that the city's bargaining team, including the police chief, is here tonight. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to take them. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
Sierra Broussard, Sioux Falls here. Harry Beck again here. This is what, two years ago, we was here with the mayor's administration and they said, "We have the money. Where is the money for these police officers?" So, we could sit here all day and say, "Oh, the police do such a good job. Oh, they protect our city. Blase, blase." Wonderful to say that, right? But the money situation on this, and I'm, I'm gonna tell you something, I don't care what the chief of police says either. His police department's gonna be divided on top of this. I had sergeants and officers call me this past week on this issue. They want to see specialty pay. If you break down your specialty pay, it'd be fifty-four cents an officer here for a five-day work pay period here. When you're in the bomb squad, you're on the narcotics unit, street crimes unit, you have to put special training into that, okay? You follow me, right? Okay. So, they want to get paid for that, into that specialty pay. Now, when they do get called for service, I was told by the officers and sergeants that they get time and a half or they get some kind of a sense of pay to go out there. We're talking about your police department here, guys. We're talking about, where does it fall with Omaha, Nebraska? Where does it fall with Iowa and in the other states on our pay raise? I don't want to hear from no council member, "Oh, we got a wonderful police department." Oh, the police department does this and the police department does that. We're talking about money here. We're talking about people, supporting people's families here. Both sides, we have the officers and sergeants tug a warrant with, with management, with the captains and the lieutenants and the sergeant and the assistant chief and the chiefs. And this police department, I said two years ago, is divided. And it's still divided and it hasn't came up to a whole yet. Yes, this is a sensitive issue, but does the police department should be able to get what they, what they want and what they need? Yes, they should. I asked the mayor and I asked for city council, do we have the money to move around so they can get the pay that they want and need? Negotiation is very intense. Not everybody's gonna get what they want, but when it comes down to the police department protecting and serving our community, we have to do what's right in the interest of the police department. Street crimes unit, narcotics unit, that's not an easy task here. And we have the SWAT team, that's not an easy task. And the bomb squad, it's not an easy task to do. And getting up in the bed two, three o'clock in the morning on these calls for service. So, yes, I think that they should get specialty pay here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'm Tommy Schmitz. Although I'm aware of the facts because of my position on the Fraternal Order of Police, Labor Council negotiating team, I'm speaking to you as a citizen on this matter of public concern. What you have before you is nothing short of an epic failure of the process. The city team started contract negotiations with these shared objectives. Attract qualified applicants for employment, retain experienced and qualified employees, provide incentives for employees to pursue career advance opportunities, accomplish these objectives within reasonable economic parameters. Given these shared objectives that the FOP labor union also had, we designed economic proposals to accomplish these goals. When the economic portion of negotiations occurred, it was apparent that the city team did not even consider the union's proposals and had a short predetermined agenda of what their final and best offer would be. Although the city team stated their goal was to get a police contract ratified, their actions and quickly ceasing productive negotiations painted a clear picture of true intentions. Actions speak louder than words. Ask yourself this, counselors. If the city was truly committed to having a police contract ratified by the membership, why were they so hasty in declaring their final and best offer when the union was fully prepared and is still fully prepared to continue and come to a reasonable compromise? If the city was truly committed to having a police contract ratified by the membership, why would they refuse our repeated request to sit back down at the negotiation table when the city's offer was voted down so strongly to refresh everyone's memory by more than ninety-five percent of the union? If the city was truly committed to having a police contract ratified by the membership, why would they not request mediation service and assistance from the South Dakota Department of Labor after they declared impasse? The answer is the city's intent was crystal clear. This is extremely disturbing. Your administration touts such an appreciation and commitment to law enforcement. Actions speak louder than words. Let's be clear, adding more officers to the Sioux Falls PD as the city grows, increasing our training budget, providing necessary equipment, and upgrading our computer and camera systems is your responsibility as elected officials to the citizens. None of these things improve the quality of life for the men and women of the Sioux Falls Police Department or our families. Words like honesty, integrity, character are the very principles that we live by. We would expect and demand the same from our leaders, a sentiment which I believe the citizens would echo. Actions, or more inappropriate, or more appropriately inaction, is what defines one's true character. The police labor union faces different challenges and unique obstacles in order for us to remain competitive. The city's archaic and socialistic approach to this process and towards the unions directly contradicts with your administration's claims of Sioux Falls being a progressive city and prioritizing employees. Actions speak louder than words. Having an imposed contract is devastating to employee morale. Keep in mind, more than ninety percent of the members that compromise the Sioux Falls PD are affected by this contract. But I can assure you, one hundred percent of the department is affected by the morale. This should be apparent by what happened in two thousand and sixteen. Should we not learn from these lessons? With this now being the second and back-to-back contract that's being imposed on the police department, perhaps you as our city's leaders should recognize there is a problem, address it and seek solutions. Ignoring a problem only causes things to fester and degrade. True leaders tackle tough problems and seek solutions, not step back and assign blame. Actions speak louder than words. Despite what has brought us to this point, if the council decides or compels the city to sit back at the negotiation table, we are more than willing to do that. We did not declare impasse. We are absolutely steadfast in our resolve that we could have reached a contract that would have been ratified. That being said, the Labor Council expects and encourages you to improve, to approve imposing this contract if you do not compel the city to sit back down with us. We would definitely prefer that rather than the punitive measures. The FOP Labor Council agrees that having this meager contract imposed is better than working without a contract. We are committed to continue to make Sioux Falls the safe community it is and take pride in the excellent service and work we do. Not feeling valued by your employer is discouraging and disheartening. Unfortunately, this has become status quo for the rank and file of the police department. An optimist would say this presents an excellent opportunity for committed leaders to make positive changes before the next negotiations. Time will tell. Actions speak louder than words. Thank you for your service to our city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tommy. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have questions for Bill or anyone from the city's negotiating team? Counselor Sale?
Whether it be Bill or Ryan Sage, my question would be, if the city council votes not to approve this resolution, what are the repercussions?
I'll share my opinion and if Ryan wants to offer a different one, that would be fine. Counselor, if the council did not approve this contract, where we would be is falling back to the existing contract. And we would honor those terms until such time as either some other deal is struck, but we would honor the current, the terms of the current contract with no inflationary increases if that's where you were going.
Counselor Staley?
First of all, I just want to make one comment. And that is that as I talk with people across our community, the, this force of people falls into the highest priority of our city. And so, and I think we probably all agree that, I mean, we need law enforcement now more than ever in our growing community. And I want the public to know that as council members, we're approving a contract here, but we, we have nothing to do with this. We did hear, we've heard from each side, but we are not involved with the negotiations. We don't have any of the nuts and bolts of the inner workings of this. And I just talked, I was able to talk to Ryan Sage, the city's attorney, and Tom Wilka, the police officer's attorney. And I, I made mention before the meeting today, gee, I'd like to be in on these negotiations next time around. And they both laughed, but then they said, you know, maybe there's something to that, to having a council presence and maybe having another member from their own police department on that. But nonetheless, we weren't involved with, with where we got to today. So, I have two questions for the attorneys. The two questions is, number one, and I don't know if our own Stacy Coystre here wants to answer this, but number one question, or do you want me to wait on that?
Stacy's recused from this item, so Ryan, can you come forward, please?
Okay. The two questions I have is, question number one, can, could I make an amendment to send this back to the bargaining table? And question number two, can we make an amendment to amend the contract?
Good evening, councilman. Mr. Mayor Ryan Sage, Assistant City Attorney, City Attorney's Office. The answer to your first question is, no, you essentially can't amend the contract. It's the council's job and duty to either vote the contract up or vote the contract
This sends you back to negotiations?
And, and you cannot. You, you can vote the contract down. And then the options would either be, as, as Mr. O'Toole stated, that the previous contract or the current contract would continue in effect in all terms and conditions. Or until an agreement is reached, or if an agreement is reached, that could then be implemented once the two sides reach an agreement. But the council cannot direct the parties to go back to the bargaining table.
And then how about amending the contract?
You cannot. You can vote on it up or vote on it down. And then the, the parties could negotiate a contract, but the council itself cannot negotiate the terms of the contract.
Thank you. Other questions for staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I have a couple of questions for Director O'Toole, because I, I, I'm confused by a little bit of what, one of the statements you made, or I'm trying to understand it. You made the comment that the mayor wasn't involved in the negotiating. I know the council wasn't involved in the negotiating. So I'm trying to figure out who set the policy of what's in the contract. The cost of living, obviously, we went from the CPIU. But all the things that are part of the sticking points that we didn't get there, if the mayor didn't set that policy and the council didn't set that policy, who gave you the parameters of what to negotiate to put into the contract?
Counsel, let me clarify. What I was trying, the point I was trying to make is the mayor is not sitting actively at the table. He provides the authority to the city's bargaining team, but he doesn't actively sit at the table. That, that's what I was trying to clarify.
Thank you. I think one of the things that, for me, that's confusing too, then I guess, is I'm trying to understand is that we passed a budget without knowing what the amounts were. We put general numbers into the, the budget that we passed without knowing whether it was two and a half or two or 3% to give general parameters. We're supposed to be here to set the policy of what we're doing as a, a city. And I think to use Mr. Schmitz's words, you know, this is an epic failure. Today's December 18th, and from your earlier words, you negotiated at the table from July to September. You've still got two weeks. We could come to an agreement and get it in place and have us, we have the ability to set, call a special meeting and get it in place. There's no reason that we can't come to an agreement. We're all, we're a great city that has the ability to come to some kind of agreement. They're willing to talk, we're willing to talk. I, I don't know why we stopped talking in September, that we got to a fundamental point that, that we didn't feel we needed to talk to our employees anymore, that we got to best and final that quickly to not have that discussion. And especially without the public having any input in whatever the cost is. I, I mean, I still don't know what the cost is to get to where they're asking versus where we are. I doubt that it bankrupts the city, as, as some have said. So I just, I, I'm curious why we negotiated over a two-month period and then we're here now two weeks before the end of the year trying to approve this rather than, than doing it. I, more of a statement, I apologize. It should have been a question, but I'm frustrated.
Thank you, Bill. Questions for staff? If, Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill, did I understand correctly that basically the, where the big difference was on this was pretty much the funds, as far as the raise or the cola, however the increase would be, was you're talking about the same amount of money, it's just a matter of where it was going, whether it was throughout the whole police force or to certain positions? Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I, I would put it this way, that obviously the, the city put its resources towards the cola that would benefit all the officers. Uh, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the union, but their proposal dealt more with, uh, taking a little less in the cola and applying some dollars towards specialty pay and for longevity pay.
Okay.
It didn't cover all those costs, but that was their general concept as it related to that.
The general idea was that it was a pot of money, let's say it was a certain amount, and there was a disagreement how it would be dispersed, pretty much.
And we, with the manner in which they were trying to accomplish that for a multitude of reasons that, and again, uh, we had, we engaged in very, uh, robust discussions and, and good faith negotiations over that time period.
Counselor Erickson?
Couple of questions for you, Bill, if I may. Um, we did, we, meaning the city, did a study of, um, wages and salaries throughout the city. Many were, were chosen. And, uh, one of those was the, the, talk to me about how that's, what's the, the guideline or what's the target percentage that you want it to be at? And how, how do we fare for, um, police? I know we looked at it for our employees and, and have seen a few other ones, but talk to me about how that impacted the police and where we align for that, based on that third-party study?
Yes, the city commits, uh, significant resources to engaging in a comprehensive study about every eight to 10 years. It happened to coincide with the collective bargaining process. And it worked well, very well. We hired Seagull Waters Consulting. Uh, and when they do their analysis and collect data from all of our peer cities throughout our region, uh, the police officer at, at the, they, they analyze it based on the minimum midpoint and maximum of the salary range. And for a police officer, the minimum was at 104% of the market. The midpoint was at 103%, and the maximum was 102% of the market. For a police sergeant, it was 120% at the minimum, 108% at the midpoint, and 99% of the maximum. And our consultant, they, they, they say that a position is market competitive if, if it is within 95 and 105% of the market. So that's when I say, uh, we were at, we were market competitive, is their findings. And we didn't arbitrarily pick this, that's the information they shared back with us.
If I can follow up once, just going off of what Counselor Selberg says then is, if we have this pot of money essentially, um, and it's not given equally, how does that impact other departments in the police department? Because if we're at that 99 and above, if only certain departments are, are incentivized, so to speak, how does that impact, um, really the department as a whole? I mean, would that make some go down and we're playing catch-up in five or 10 years? I mean, how does that work? I'm just trying to understand.
From a, from a compensation standpoint, uh, we, we want to see the, the base salary rise as much as we can get it. That's, that allows us to keep up with inflation and keep that scale competitive in the marketplace. When you take less than that, you'll slowly start to fall behind the market, and you'll have to make that up. But there was simply a, a philosophical difference of opinion as to how they wanted to apply and award some of those dollars. And that's why I say when we philosophically disagreed because of, of some things that, that would happen as a result of approaching it in the manner they were requesting, that we just simply didn't agree with. And we shared those, uh, concerns, uh, through the process. That answered your question.
Yes, and one more. Okay, so we talk about this, this impasse. So the last and best final, help me understand this. The last and best final offer was given and, uh, final means final. It's the last one and it's, that's, that's what's given, right? So that, that happens, um, they vote it down, and no one chose to go to the Department of Labor. So then we're just kind of at a standstill because no one technically went any further. So we're-
That, that's correct. That's why I say that's, that's a, it's a significant concept procedurally, that neither party does that, uh, we are then able to move forward. I mean, when you have an impasse, there has to be a mechanism to, to move forward. Uh, and, and that's what the law provides, is that i- if you don't make that election, we can unilaterally implement our last best offer. But we had to wait to ensure that they were not willing to do that. We would have had to honor that and follow that process before we could implement. So when that letter came, that was important.
And is that why then you had to wait?
I'm sorry.
Then you had to wait until, until there was that?
We had, yes, we had ensured that they, it was not their desire to go to the Department of Labor.
Okay. Thank you for answering those questions, appreciate it.
Counselor Staley?
Oh, let me say that in the last few weeks, we've had a discussion within the council about our own-
Is this a question for Bill or before?
Yeah, it's going to be an amendment I'm going to make. Okay?
We don't have, we don't have a motion yet.
Okay, I'll wait.
Oh, okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, and I would need a motion before we can introduce an amendment. So, is there a motion?
Move approval, Knightzert.
Second, Erickson.
Okay, motion approved by Knightzert and seconded by Erickson. Counselor Staley?
We, in the last month, within our council, we had a discussion about council pay for our staff. And, and this ju- group is very generous, and we're very affirming of our staff. We, we wanted to set the rate of pay for something that's going to help them want to stay within our employment and, and let them know we appreciate them. So I, I think we're, we've been very generous that way. And so, i- in that same spirit here, I'm going to make a motion that we, uh, direct the city to go back to the bargaining table and continue discussions with the police union.
Second, Starr. Okay, motion by Counselor Staley, seconded by Counselor Starr. Counselor Sale, do you have comment on that?
Well, I just had-
Can I have a point of order?
Yes, you can.
Did we just not hear from our city attorney that there could be no amendments on this resolution?
We've heard from our city attorney in the past that we couldn't do something, we've still brought it up.
Ryan, do you want to speak to this amendment that Counselor Staley made?
You can vote it down if you want to.
Certainly. The council cannot amend the contract. If the council wants to vote the contract down, then the parties could go back to the bargaining table. The council can't direct the parties to continue the bargaining. You can't order that process to continue. What you can do is vote a contract down, and then it would be up to the parties to decide how to proceed from that point.
So that amendment needs to be withdrawn as it's, we're not legally allowed to do that per the city attorney. So we're back to the original motion that's on the floor to approve this discussion. Counselor Sale?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a, as a past city employee who's been very involved in labor negotiations with Counselor Brecky, sitting on the other side of the table, I'm deeply dismayed at that we have reached this point. I thought we all made a commitment to public service and to take care of our city employees. Wage studies, you can twist them around any way you want. They don't take into effect all the benefits that go in with your job. They don't take in all the, uh, pensions and don't take in health insurance costs. So you can take those wage studies and use them to your advantage, whether you be a city employee or whether you be city staff. And I know, I've been there, and Counselor Brecky has been on the other side of me, and we've had, uh, years of heated discussions. And we, most of the time came to a very fitful resolution, and sometimes we did not. But I will say the, the relationship that the city employees have today has changed, that the police department seems to be the one, excuse me, the FOP seems to be the one that wants to structurally change the pay scale. And I appreciate that, uh, what they're doing, the best for their membership. I am, I, I am so close to trying to vote this down, but I know the rabbit hole that happens. And we will give up, and excuse me if this is confidential, but I was shared that the raises that this, the FOP would give up is approximately $1.2 million. I don't want to see them go two years under the same contract with the city not moving and them to give up all those raises. So this is a very tough position. The council does not negotiate contracts, it's administrative function. And that's sometimes unfortunate, but it's probably good that you're not negotiating with the aid of us. Because that would, we're certainly not the professionals on the other side. The fact that you came to resolution on non-economic things makes me believe that the internal workings of the police department is functioning fine. Yes, it does, it's terrible for morale when you don't get the contract. And this is the second time in a row. But I will say, when we say, when I personally say that the, that I value the police department, I certainly do. And I want you guys to be the highest paid of all the study. I want all the city employees to be there. We spend a lot of time as city councilors bragging up Sioux Falls is number one at this, Sioux Falls is number one at that. I want you guys to, and gals to be paid at the top rate. That's not what we're here for tonight. This resolution to me says, does the FOP get the $1.2 million in raises? Excuse me, raises the next two years, or do they not? And I'm going to vote for the raise, and it pains me to do so, but I'm going to vote to give you guys a raise.
Counselor Kylie?
Um, thank you, Mayor. And, uh, pardon me for requesting clarification on your earlier ruling, but, uh, normally I'd just lean over and, uh, ask our city attorney, but since he's recused himself, I'm going to ask Ryan Sage to come forward. And not that I'm doubting the mayor's ruling, but was, uh, was that appropriate? Or is it more appropriate for it to go forward to a vote? And I'm referring to Counselor Staley's proposed amendment. I'd rather err on the side of caution here.
Procedurally, I guess a motion was, was made and seconded. And so I believe we talked to the parliamentarian, um, with respect to whether or not that should be voted on. My advice to the council would be not to pass it because of the legal ramifications, but whether or not a vote's appropriate, I'd defer to the clerk.
I would say in this case that no, it shouldn't be brought forward mostly because it, it simply can't. It's basically, in the words of Roberts Rules, a dilatory motion, um, that can't have an effect based on what's presented to the council.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Counselor Selberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I guess it comes down to me on, on this question is just, it seems to me it's an argument of, nobody's trying to hold back funds from our police force. It's a matter where the disagreement seems to be coming from is how it's dispersed. And to me, I, again, that's nothing that we're in the middle of negotiations for, but to me it says that the money's there, here's where it's fallen out. I know the 250 and the 350 cola numbers sure look a lot better than, I know, a couple of years ago when we were all sitting here making votes like this. I think it was a dollar fifty. We all know what that was through. But anyway, I, I, I think probably the most disappointing thing that I hear is, is some of the language that comes out, you know, kind of the questioning honesty, integrity, character. You know, this kind of stuff is disappointing because, and to somehow think, if any of the police department would think that they are not appreciated, well, you couldn't be more wrong, especially, at least speaking for me, and I'm quite sure anybody else in this room. Um, you're all rock stars. I don't think I've ever heard anybody in city leadership, or anybody in the city for that matter, that's not a huge supporter, doesn't want to give you all that we could possibly give. And, um, yeah, anyway, we're behind you one way or the other. I, I just hope you know that, so wanted to state that, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Knightzert?
A lot of what I said was, has already been said, so I'll just keep it pretty short. That, re- really, it's just a, a matter of good people can disagree. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. Um, thi- this is not a, a bad deal, two and a half percent and 3%. And I, I just want to say that, please, 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 don't mistake a lack of agreement on, uh, on every detail for a lack of appreciation of the job you do in the city. And I know that staff that I'm looking at cares about officers. They do. And this mayor, I know this mayor, I've talked to this mayor. He cares deeply about officers. So that, that rhetoric is, is really disappointing. And I, I really don't, I mean, it's really upsetting to me to think that the people that are protecting us are out there on the streets that could think that we don't value you, or the mayor doesn't. It's, it's, it's just not true. It, again, just, just think about in life how many times that y- you just couldn't come to some agreement. But you're both good people, and that's all this is. Thank you.
Counselor Staley?
Uh, another question for our attorney, please. Ryan? Ryan, I just, the question, and the, the hard thing I have with this, the challenging thing is that we're being brought a, a contract to approve. So, and, and we're being told yes or no, vote up or down. I'm, I'm inclined to vote no, just because I want the city to go back to the table. But my question is, across our state and other municipalities, if I were to call and talk with other elected officials and say, how do you handle contracts when they come to you? Am I going to be told the same thing, that they are, it's an up or down vote, and that those elected bodies have no ability to talk about the terms or to say, go back and renegotiate? Is that a, is that some kind of a written statewide law among county commissioners and city council members across our state?
Counsel, I can't speak for what other jurisdictions do, other municipalities do. What, what I can tell you is that the negotiation of the contract itself is the function of the administration. The voting of the ratification of the contract is the job of the council. Now, you can certainly vote that contract down and make a request, but you can't order the administration to go back and renegotiate that contract. You can't order the Fraternal Order of Police to come back to the negotiating table. That's outside of the function of the council. For, for this purpose, the contract is before you to either be ratified or to be voted down.
I understand, but I, I'm thinking, if I were to make some phone calls now in the next week and call around to Rapid City, Watertown, Aberdeen, and say, how do you handle this? If a contract comes before you and you're having an impasse, are you able to send it back within that elected body? Then I come back to you, and I'm going to say, hey, how are we going to change this in the future so that we have a little more authority in, instead of, again, it's kind of like the golf course thing a year ago, where we get handed something and we're told, well, here it is, just sign off or vote no, is what, is some of us did. So I, that, this is, to me, is the problematic thing when we're given that authority of, of signing off on something. But, so you're just saying this is maybe be a unique situation to Sioux Falls city government?
I, I don't know what other municipalities do, I can't answer that. What I can tell you is the function of the council is to vote on the contract as it's presented.
Thank you, Ryan.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Brecky.
May I be heard?
No, public input is, is complete, sir. Counselor Breckie, you have the floor.
I think for me, this is, is kind of an age-old problem for me, and I've always, I've always thought about this. I mean, how much do you pay someone who's willing to run into a burning building when everybody else is running out? How much do you pay someone who's willing to take a bullet for you? You, it's priceless. There is no adequate salary for police and fire, ever, because of what they're willing to do for us every single day. And so these discussions are always difficult for me because of the value of what they do. And when we have disagreements like this, I think it is very painful. It's very painful. But the way that it's been explained to me is that the city wants to give the police department a cola, and the police department would like more divisions and, and more adjustments in specialty pay. And that there has been some give, and that there has been some specialty pay allowed. And I realize it's miniscule, but I also know, having sat in on negotiations, that that's a crack in the door. And you, you guys know that as well, that if we've opened a crack, you're not going to get to waltz in and, and get everything you want. But bit by bit, there's probably a good chance that there might be some shifting in, in what's done in the future. And I, I hope that that's true. And again, that won't be the council's decision, that'll be the administration's. But in the meantime, the city has done a wage study, and that's the best we can do for coming up with how you pay someone for doing this job. And if we don't stick by and large with that, then, then, you know, I think Bill O'Toole's right, eventually, then we're going to find ourselves in this catch-up position. But I do think that, you know, there has been some show on the city's part that, that the specialty pay is, is a topic of discussion. And, you know, maybe there's some room for that in the future. In the meantime, I think the city's committed, in light of what the Seagull Water Study was, you know, to just give an appropriate cola and spread that out across the board. And like, like Sale, which we hardly ever agree on labor contract things, but we would agree tonight, I don't want to find you in the situation where you're not going to realize that, that, that pay that's on the table. And so I will be voting for the contract tonight. But with an open mind, as we set the agenda for the future, of giving a good look to that specialty pay issue and seeing if there is something the city might be able to do in the future.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Starr?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Wilka.
That's okay.
One of the things that, in your response, Mr. Wilka, to the city's press release of December 10th, you'd made a point about the cities that we compare Sioux Falls' police department to and the FOP contract to, and it talked about whether those departments had specialty or longevity pay. Would you elaborate a little bit on that in that comparison? And then, you've got something on top of that?
Well, as, as I recall from the Seagull Water Study, there were probably 13 other municipalities that were used in the analysis. And the FOP obtained the contracts from 11 of them. And I think every one of them had some form of specialty pay, and many of them had several forms of specialty pay. There was never a, an issue in negotiations about the FOP's proposal costing too much. Cost was really never the issue, or at least was not the source of any discussion. It was always the city's position that they wanted only the cola. At the very last minute, they added the, which I agree, was miniscule, $500 a year for the detectives. But that was far short of, of what we were asking for. I would like to respond to some other things that were said, if I may, in addition to Counselor Starr's question. And that is, we were not at a standstill from September to December. There were four times that I requested in writing that the city team go back to the table and negotiate. And every time, I referred to the fact that there was a vast realm of alternatives that we could arrive at between our last proposal and the city's last proposal. And every time, the response was, no, you've received our last best offer. I disagree with Mr. O'Toole's philosophical point that if you ever move from what you state was your last best offer, it makes that concept meaningless. I don't think it does at all. When they found out on October 25th that our membership had voted down by 95%, it seems reasonable that they would sit back and say, well, maybe we can reach a, a better last best offer and go back to the table and attempt it. But each time, and there were four times I requested, each time, we were rebuffed. There was no standstill because people had to decide whether or not they were going to ask for the intervention of the Department of Labor. The Department of Labor process, as Counselors Sale and Breckie know very well from their personal experience, has no teeth. The first step is a mediation. The mediator has no power to order anybody to do anything. The second step is what's called a fact-finding, that hearing examiner from the Department of Labor has no power to order either side to make a concession. We went through that two years ago, and all it did was put things off for two months, because one of our problems was getting things scheduled with the Department of Labor, which is frankly understaffed. So we could have gone back to the table in October easily and talked again. I don't agree that the city council is without authority to pass a resolution encouraging the city's team to go back to the table. I don't agree with that opinion. There is no state law that prescribes that. There is nothing in the charter. However, the problem is, even if upon a resolution, the city's team goes back to the table, the council does not have the power to make that team change its position. And so we could end up back here next month in the same position. And we certainly don't want to go into the next year with no raise.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, one more question. Just, so, Mr. Wilka, are you making a case tonight that binding arbitration for public employees would be a, something that would be a, a good thing for public employees?
Well, I do. I mean, politically, I think that's true, and it's a, it's an effort that has been tried in this state before and lost in the courts. And it's something we studied some years ago. I think it is a good idea, but, you know, we don't have that, and I don't think that our legislature is going to pass it anytime soon. What I do think we, we could do, though, is work on how we're going to conduct negotiations next time, that the model that we're following is not working. And there must be other alternatives. Not that we can decide those tonight, nor should we, but I think it's something that should be addressed long before negotiations start again.
Thank you, Mr. Wilka.
I can make a closing?
Counselor Sale, do you have a follow-up?
Not a question, but just a statement to the motion.
Do you have a question for Mr. Wilka, Counselor Sale?
No, but I have a statement.
Mr. Wilka, you can sit down.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I guess one of the things that I wanted to do tonight is, I thought about rewriting something of how I would vote one way or the other on this contract. And I went back and looked at my notes from two years ago. And what I said two years ago was, I'm not going to vote for a best and final offer and implementing it on a group of people who don't want that. There's no way that I'm going to, to change that position in what I believe at this point. I'm not, when a membership votes 10 to 209 that they're not in favor of this contract, I'm not going to vote to implement it on them. You can, you know, it was said earlier, we can, we do appreciate what our police department does, and we appreciate exactly what they do. But this is actually the point where the rubber hits the road. This is the part where we have to make that decision. And maybe as a counselor, we did, as a council, we shirked our responsibility of not stepping in sooner. And I blame myself for that. I missed an email that said, how much do we want to be involved as a council? We set policy, and the, you know, we can argue what's administrative, and this was all administrative. I disagree. We set the budget. We make the decision of what's put in the budget to pay our employees. That's a major policy decision that we make every year that we do, not only the capital improvement plan, but our regular general fund budget as well. We missed the boat by not stepping in sooner and, and taking the lead. And that's a leadership failure, I believe, not only on myself, but our entire council of not stepping in and saying, we're not that far apart, and we should be able to get a deal done. And maybe it was a, a non-monetary issue that we, we could have adjusted, or there were other things that, that maybe the, we're not willing to open the door to specialty pay, but maybe there was something else where we could get to a point where we could settle this. And running out the clock and letting the process melt down, again, I'm taking the blame for it. I, I think that's, that's the problem of us not. And I swore this wouldn't happen again two years ago, and that we wouldn't get to this point. And I let it happen again. So.
Counselor Sale?
Just to reference something that Counselor Starr said about binding arbitration. 25 years ago, when we wrote the city charter, I had that in one of the drafts, and I couldn't get it through. I pushed for it, and I could not get it through. And so it's unfortunate that it didn't happen at that time.
Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. Number one, no council wants to impose a contract. No employee group wants to have a contract imposed upon them. I know that I did not. Yet I'm hearing tonight from members to vote yes on this, so that individuals don't go without raises in the future. And that's exactly what would happen. Nobody would get their, their, their colas and, and, and the raises that are currently on the board with this proposal. So it, it is a tough decision to make, but I am going to support this, this evening. And it, and I do truly appreciate what the men and women of our police force do for us each and every day. I'm, I am also concerned about the patrol men and women that are not serving in specialty roles within the police force, and the impact that something other than what we're going to be imposing today would have on them. I'm, I'm interested in attracting more of the best applicants to fill our roles in the police force in the future. And so, trying to do what we can, but I'm hearing it both ways here tonight, and I'm hearing, do not vote no on this. And so I'm going to be voting yes on this.
Seeing no further discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on this item, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Staley?
No.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that item passes, six to two, item 36.
Item 36, a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Hey, Albert.
Mayor Council, Albert Schmidt, Planning Office. This is a petition to annexation in the southwest quadrant, approximately 30 acres, 29.45, by applicant Nelson Development. The current owner is Pine Knoll LLC. This area is just along Ellis Road and would actually be an annexation of the remaining portion of Ellis Road, as seen here on the exhibit. The proposed concept plan at this time for this area is residential development with a small office area on the southwest corner of 22nd and Ellis, as shown here. I'm going to help you out. This kind of looks at the 2018 aerial, while Ellis Road is under construction, showing the annexation area kind of popping out in the light gray area and the surrounding area on there. With that, the petitioner is here with questions. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have.
Thanks, Albert. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, you have questions for Albert on this? Counselor Neitzert?
So, we're taking in all of this here, and then what's the little strip going down Ellis, sir, that just technically annexes it?
That portion of the road is not annexed in currently. So with this annexation, we spent the capital improvement funds to improve that road, so we just thought we would incorporate that along with it, so that we were maintaining our own portion of the road.
Yeah, considering we just paved it, I'll take it. Okay. And then, the remaining, it looks, I think there's about three rural properties there?
There are two houses and one empty lot south of there, on the west side of, east or south, Ellis Road, yes.
Would this now begin a conversation?
So,
With them?
If you're looking at this area and thinking, would this initiate city conversations for annexation? On the left-hand side of your screen now is the criteria we developed through our year-long process with the Annexation Task Force. Criteria one is only half met with this. The other half of that would have to be their actually development all the way around there. And so when you look at the aerial photo on the right-hand side, which I can zoom in if you want me to zoom in, it's actually a live map that I can move around and play with live here.
I actually live on the map, or live not too far, so.
So, there's a lot of land here that's not, one, not platted, and two, not built on yet. And so market conditions being what they may, it could go quickly, but it...
Yeah, okay, so it depends on the, the speed of the actual development here?
Yeah, and they could come in beforehand anyways, depending on what their desires are. We have sent them letters about this annexation.
Obviously voluntary would be preferable. And then, it looks like, based on if, if that was a subdivision plan, that those three roads, like Mary Beth, are going to go up and complete to 22nd?
Yes. That's the plan at this point in time. I'll start here.
Very nice. Okay, yeah, that's, it's one little pocket that's there, so it's great to see that coming in. Thanks.
Any other questions for Albert? Counselor Staley?
Albert, go back. I would like to have you zoom in on that, if you would.
Let me grab my mouse here, and I'll... Just make this live. Not as quick as I want it, I apologize. All right. So zoom in a little closer for you here, and then, so this is our 2018 aerial photo you're seeing here.
So the areas that are in question, just put that mouse over.
So the annexation area here is the light gray area, and over to the west, too, the area that's not annexed in, you can kind of see a light dashed red line here, are these three properties here currently?
Okay, and so they've been, you've sent them a letter, like, registered now, or is it?
Oh, this, this isn't registered. This is just regular mail. I've talked to this property owner here on the phone once, and talked with him in email as well before.
Because I thought we had changed something about how we're going to alert people that they may be in the roadway of this. I thought we were going to have more of a standardized...
We do, but the registration, the registered mail was part of the actual initiated criteria. This mailing was part of the petition to annexation process that these, that this 29.45 acres is part of.
So, just, just to be clear, I just want to make sure that these people in that area are aware that this could be around the corner for them. Right? Because you said there's a few more triggers that, that, didn't Counselor Neitzert say that could happen quickly? That, I mean, that they would be brought in then?
Well, so once the second portion of the criteria is met, then we'd move forward down there, which we do with CIP projects in, on Ellis Road already. So then you'd have that. So then we'd start our formal talks at that point, which would mean that we'd send them the certified letters at least six months in advance. We'd, it'd be at least a year-long process of us communicating with these individual property owners.
So there is a chance these people are not aware that, that this could be in the, in the future for them?
Annexation of their property?
Yes.
They should be aware, based on the development of the, of the area that developing, developing around there is there, but we haven't sent them formal notification that they're, they've been initiated for conversation, annexation, because those criteria have not been met.
But it, it sounds like it's, it's very close. That, that was my question the last, when this first reading came up, about how, how these people would be affected. So what I'm going to request is, I would like to get their contact information, because I will personally reach out to them. Okay? Thank you, Albert.
Other questions for Albert? Counselor Erickson?
Sorry, Albert. With, this is, this is a large chunk of land that we're looking at annexing. And so I'm curious, as far as the plan with that. And then, does the applicant own all of that land?
The applicant owns land adjacent to it as Uh, the applicant owns land adjacent to it as well, uh, and this is not owned by the applicant yet, but under contract, I believe.
Okay, so does he own the property of where the houses are?
No, those three houses? No, those, these empty houses here are owned by other-
No, but the two on the lot, those two that are already sitting on the corner?
These two here on the, yeah, those are, would be under contract, because Pine Knoll LLC currently owns them.
Right, okay.
The applicant is here, could we answer that specifically if you want to?
Well, and I don't know if Counselor Staley was, was referring to those or the other ones in the other dotted red box or not, um, but I think-
The ones farther to the-
Gotcha.
-south.
Gotcha. Um, my, my point of bringing up some of this is, this, this is just more economic development, more development that, uh, we will see, um, this particular person bringing forth, and I think that this is, this is a good news story. This is a great step. Um, I know that there's a lot of desire over in that area, uh, for additional development, and so I'm excited to see what it brings forward, and so, um, for that, I'll make a motion to move approval.
Second, Nitzert. Okay, motion approved by Erickson, seconded by Nitzert. Any discussion? A vote on this, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight-zero. Item thirty-seven.
Item thirty-seven. A resolution establishing the city of Sioux Falls legislative priorities for the twenty-nineteen state legislative session.
And I believe Jim is getting PowerPoint up on that.
Good evening, I apologize for that, our computer was locked up. Um, Jim David with the city council office. And if I go back to the beginning here, Sioux Falls is actually represented by nine legislative districts, six, nine through fifteen, and twenty-five, with nine senators and eighteen representatives that account for just over twenty-five percent of both legislative houses. About half of these districts are completely within city limits, but others are rural areas and surrounding communities. For example, District Ten includes portions of northeastern Sioux Falls, but also the entire city of Brandon. District Twenty-five represents an area east of Sycamore Avenue between Arrowhead Parkway and Forty-first Street, but also Dell Rapids and Garrettson. With the geographically diverse delegation collaborating with counties and surrounding communities has been key towards building a cohesive legislative strategy. And looking back over the last few years, there has been some major legislative wins in partnership with South Dakota Municipal League and city administration. Some recent examples include repealing the sunset on the nine-one-one surcharge and tourism tax, wastewater regionalization, allowing Sioux Falls employees to participate in the South Dakota retirement system, allowing an additional fifteen days for complex competitive bids, and state funding for expanding the Lewis and Clark Regional Water System in lieu of federal funds. The resolution before you tonight was developed with input from city councilors, city administration officials, and our partner local governments, including Minnehaw County, Brandon, Dell Rapids, and Harrisburg. One of the major challenges faced during the upcoming legislative, legislative session will be item one, which is upgrading the current emergency radio system to the P-25 national standard. Our current emergency radio system was established in net two thousand and three to resolve a communication breakdown that was experienced during the nineteen ninety-eight Spencer tornado. Today, the emergency system includes twenty thousand state, local, and tribal radios that receive an average of two million calls a day, or two million calls a month. The state has been notified by the vendor that the radios will become obsolete in twenty-twenty-three, necessitating the P-25 upgrade, a nine million dollar expense. In addition, those, there are radio towers dating back to the nineteen sixties and seventies that will need replacement, and areas of the state are still without service today. Joint Appropriations has met earlier this month to look into this issue, and there are, they are currently evaluating funding sources for this effort. Other items on the platform or on the legislative priorities include one that's been on there for the last few years, which is the alternative publication options. This could include both an online or just allowing legal publications on classified newspapers. Number three was brought forward by Minnehaw County and its request to reduce the current statutory mandate that they have three legal newspapers, reduce that to one. That would be consistent with both school districts and with municipalities. Number four is an item that has been on there for the last few years, and it's just a general statement requesting expansion of workforce housing opportunities. Number five is, is one from the counties, it was a local option grocery receipts tax for county services, which resembles an entertainment tax for municipalities. Number six is a general statement of support for tax increment financing as a tool for economic development. And number seven requests additional funds for drug, tobacco, and alcohol intervention and education and treatment programs. Number eight is the general statement of support for cooperative activities amongst the county and municipal governments. Number nine would request the elimination of the use and excise taxes for public projects. This was brought forward from Minnehaw County. They are going to pay an estimated nine hundred thousand dollars in excise, or excuse me, in use taxes, uh, for their jail project. Number ten is a statement requesting state support for our human service agency transportation trips. Number eleven is a statement or a state funding initiative for the Emerald Ashmore. And number twelve is eliminating the presumption or presumptive probation for class five and six felonies as it relates to controlled substances. This was done in part in collaboration, uh, with the city councilors, the Legislative Ad-Hoc Committee, and Sioux Falls Police Department. This was done just outside the time of the local government collaborative group. Be happy to answer any of your questions. There are four amendments that I did post above here, but I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone from the public here to speak on any of these items?
Bruce Danielson, I guess it's number twelve. Why are we getting involved in that as the city? And it, it uh, kind of makes me think back to when there was some discussion a few months ago about the legislative priorities without any discussion from this body, from what testimony had been given by this body, that you were adopting some legislative priorities that you guys had just seen that day or within a day or so of the meeting. And once again, when I've asked a few people about the legislative priorities again, uh, nobody really knows the exact genesis of this because it hasn't been discussed amongst any of you, and in the past, we used to have, be able to go and I've recorded some working sessions where legislative priorities were discussed, and Jim did a great job bringing them out, and they had great discussion to say why these things were important, and, and I'm not seeing a, any of that being done in here. So I don't understand why number twelve is there for sure. Some of them, I think, are great ideas, and I know that the city council's been trying to pass them as legislative priorities for a while, but I, you, you guys got to learn how to work together on this and have some meetings like what used to be done with Michelle Urbanbach when she was on, you know, and it's, you're, you're seeing things just being left in a void. You gotta work together. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on any of these items? Counselors, questions for Jim, discussion on this? Counselor Brecky?
Jim, give me some background on number twelve. What, what's the genesis behind this? This is catching me off by surprise here.
Yeah, you know, the, uh, if you look back at, um, this actually came up at a director's meeting. Chief Burns had just talked about that a record number of, of meth was actually confiscated. More meth had been confiscated in that month, the entire, uh, prior year. And through that conversation at that meeting, it was discussed that, that they are facing a problem, and it has to do with this presumptive probation to where there's little incentive for defendants or for offenders to cooperate with law enforcement when they're trying to investigate a case having to deal with illegal drugs. And from that conversation, there was, uh, um, as you recall, there was a, uh, we did have that, um, Legislative Ad-Hoc Committee meeting where we did have that as a discussion. Uh, we weren't able to meet in person, so we did communicate by email, uh, on that, and there was a support, uh, within that group to add that as an item to recommend to the full council for approval.
Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. Unless Janet Brecky, did you have a follow-up? Sorry, I went in and-
No, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, sorry. Um, just to add some more context to it with the legislative priority, this was talked about at the director's meeting that we all received notes. Um, it was not added as we were trying to work through the language, um, and, and make sure that, um, the police department had the language that they wanted to see added on. So it was added. Um, it was talked about at our legislative, um, meeting with the legislators. Counselor Brecky was there, Counselor Kylie and myself were there. It was also discussed in an additional meeting with those legislators that could not attend that meeting. We met, I believe, four or five days later. Counselor Brecky, Counselor Selberg, and Counselor Kylie were in attendance. Um, it has been communicated throughout the, um, additional meetings at, that have gone out to the council. Um, so it is not a, it's not on a whim, it's not on a surprise, this has been communicated. It's been listed on our, um, when it was listed, um, through the resolution that was sent out this last week as well. Um, so there are five or six points that it has been done, and, you know, just to address, uh, Bruce, your concerns about why we're getting involved, this impacts our city. We have a huge amount of drugs on the streets in that we want to help give the best tools in the toolbox to the police and the sheriff's department and the state's attorney. This isn't just endorsed by our police department, this is endorsed by the Sheriff's Association is having the conversation, bringing it forward, which is located in the Minnehaw County. Also, the state's attorney, we've had conversations with them, and they are also requesting this. Um, the judges are the best to know. They should have that option. They don't have to do it. Oftentimes, you see things pled down, and they're, they're, someone is arrested for, um, four or five different things. They may plead to only this, but there are many more circumstances that take place on top of this. So it's, it's a, it's a big deal. The Senate Bill Seventy that was passed six years ago needs fresh eyeballs. It needs a solid look to see what that justice system should look like, along with the juvenile justice system reform that was just passed a couple of years ago. That needs to be continued, to be looked at as well, because it impacts our city, our county. As I talked to, uh, a few folks today, they, they were convinced this will not impact our jail. This will not fill up our jails having this. This is a tool in the toolbox for our police department, as well as the judges to be able to do, uh, have this, so to speak, hanging over the head. So I'd ask that you, um, leave it on there. I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I certainly don't want, uh, anyone thinking that there was anything sneaky done, because this has been talked about for at least four or five weeks. It wasn't just sprung on today.
I'd look for a motion to approve this so we can get to some of the amendments.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second.
Move to approve, Erickson, seconded, uh, by Kylie. Counselor Staley?
And I'm gonna make a motion to amend this by removing priority item twelve.
Second, Starr.
Okay, that does have a second, um, discussion on that?
The discussion is, I, I would like to have a working session on this. I'd like to have an, or an informational, where we can hear the pros and the cons of how this would actually impact our legal system, and, and right now, I, I just don't think we've had enough information. I understand that we've had a lot of meetings and there's apparently been a lot of, uh, information given, but I, I'd like to have a formal presentation and then we can kind of vet this out a little more clearly.
Counselor Erickson?
And I would encourage you to resist that. We can have more information. I think that we need to give the tools in the toolbox to our police department, as well as our sheriffs, as well as our state's attorney. I know we here represent the city of Sioux Falls, but we need to be mindful of the counties, as well as the sheriffs, and making sure that they have the best tools. And so, um, we can certainly have a working session. I think it's always important to understand the challenges that our police department is seeing on a daily basis and how we can support them, whether it's their training facility or whatever that might be. Let's have those conversations and keep the ball moving, but, uh, I, I just hope that Sioux Falls can be a leader in this area in supporting, uh, our police department.
Mr. Minister Nitzert?
Yeah, I, I, I spent some time researching this as best I could over the weekend, um, and, you know, I'm, I'm first gonna say, I, I definitely, this is something where I feel really insecure that I might be dead wrong on this, because I just haven't had, looked at it for, for a long time, and, and, you know, if, if it was in the, the notes, which, um, I, I'm sure it was, I, that, I, I, I take that. I, I will just say that I just saw it Friday night, so that's when, when I saw it on paper, that I said, "Ooh, I need to take a look at this." And I definitely see the point of giving tools in the toolbox, and I, I don't think that indiscriminately we'll be, you know, throwing low-level offenders in jail, but as I read, the whole point of SB Seventy came out of that working group. The whole idea was, why are we incarcerating and sending to prison low-level drug offenders, which is what we were doing and what it was trying to address? And in fact, as I read both sides, you know, there's, there's the one argument of we should take away this presumptive probation so that they have more tools in the toolbox. On the other hand, I've read some somewhat compelling arguments that, and by the way, I hate drug use, this is not about legalization, that some of those things that are felonies, maybe they ought to be misdemeanors. Um, so I, I, I'm just, it, I, I just struggle with the idea that we seem to be, I think we're finally coming to this point where we're starting to say, maybe we shouldn't be locking up non-violent drug use offenders all the time, that it's a waste, but then we're going to essentially hang, hang that Damocles sword over their head to say that we're gonna send you to prison for a low-level drug offense. I, I, I'm just not sure where I'm at on it, because I just haven't had a lot, a lot of time to look at it, so it's, I'm not sure about endorsing something that I'm just not sure about, I guess, so I'll stop there.
Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I wasn't surprised by this. I think it's a discussion that's been, uh, gone around for a long time. It was a major point of one of our Attorney General's, uh, platform in his campaign. It's, there's been a lot of talk. My concern with it, eh, eh, at this level, is the thing we complain about more than anything is the state legislature complains that the federal government passes unfunded mandates. And then the state passes them on to local units of government, and we complain that they tell us to do things without paying for them. And now we're doing something that's gonna have a major financial impact to our state. This is gonna lock up more people, in my opinion, and that's where we're headed. And if we're gonna be intellectually honest about this, we're gonna, I used binding arbitration earlier, I'm sure not gonna use the IC words that'll come back to haunt me at some point, but it's going to take a major tax increase if we're gonna lock our, lock people up as a way to get out of the meth epidemic. That's really what it comes down to. And I'm not ready to turn everybody out of the prison, but I think Counselor Erickson is exactly right. I think we've had some unintended consequences from the Senate bill from two year, three years ago, four years ago when it passed. Six years ago, I'll get to the right number. I, I think she's exactly right. We need to look at this. This isn't gonna do it without some major funding that goes with it. We can't just turn people loose without counseling, without drug rehab. This takes us into an area that doesn't match what we're doing in our area of expertise, and if we want to individually, uh, uh, campaign for this and, and lobby for it, I think that's good, but I'm not sure that it's a, a good use of, um, our legislative platform that, that directly affects what we're doing. And I, and I do see the problem, and I do see where it does, but I'm gonna support the amendment.
Counselor Staley?
Well, and, uh, Counselor Nitzert, nobody researches anything more than you do. And so to hear you say that you just started researching this on Friday, kind of lends itself to my concern that I don't have enough information, and you're, you, apparently, Counselor, maybe you could do an informational for us, because you're finding the pros and the cons, which I need to hear a little bit more about, about the, what, what impact this is gonna have. So once again, when it says the Sioux Falls City Council supports eliminating this, I can't support it. So I mean, that, I can't go along with this right now. Nothing against you, Counselor Erickson, for putting that on there, but that, it's just, I'm not ready to, to embrace that part of it, so that's why.
Counselor Sale?
I guess my, I, I'm a little unclear. It, the wording says eliminating presumptive probation. My understanding would be that if found guilty, that person would automatically get probation, and we're taking that off the table, where the judge would have the discretion to give them probation or to give them jail time? That's what we're recommending?
I'll let Counselor, uh, Counselor Burns, I'm sorry, I'm sure you'd love to be a counselor, wouldn't you? I'll let, please, you, Burns, come up and address it. Um, thanks for sticking around.
Am I clear in that? Or am I as muddy as Mississippi?
Thank you, Counselor, and then, no, I wouldn't want this job tonight. So, um, anyway, the presumptive probation- So anyway, the presumptive probation is that if they plead or get found guilty of that specific charge, class five or six felony, that the presumption is, absent some aggravating factor, that they are presumed to get probation. Now, there are things written into the law, and I'm no expert on it, that a judge still has a little bit of discretion, but the presumption is under the law that you start there. So all this would do, in my understanding, is it's not an automatic presumption, that a judge, that full discretion goes back to the judge. And judges tend to like discretion.
Thank you. And based on that, let's put it in there. Let's give the power to the judge.
Counselor Kylie.
Thank you. And I'm going to vote in favor of this item, or at least I am in favor of this item number 12. And the reason is, number one, it's coming from our chief of police. It's coming from our county sheriff and it's coming from law enforcement from across the state, from my understanding. And no, I'm not interested in necessarily incarcerating people, especially at the lower levels of this issue, but I am interested in having ways and avenues to get to the dealers where we're really going to make an impact on reducing the drug use. Because until we can get to them and before these, until we give these individuals really some incentive for providing that type of information, we don't have that tool in the toolbox that Counselor Erickson was referring to. So I'm in favor of retaining item number 12.
I'm going to call for a vote on this and remember, this vote is to strike this item number 12 from this list.
Councilmember Sale?
No.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
Kylie?
No.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
No.
No. That fails five to four.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to amend this by adding the following as number 13. The Sioux Falls City Council supports legislation to examine or implement driver's license testing in languages other than English. A pilot program or a summer study would help enumerate costs and challenges. As one of the only few states that have not yet implemented multi-language tests, we hamper our workforce development efforts.
Second, Staley.
All right. Motion by Starr, seconded by Staley on that amendment of adding the following as number 13. Counselor Starr.
Before we proceed any further, I am not knowing the direction that this is going to go, and I'm not referring to this evening, but how it may go once it reaches the legislative session. It may or may not have impacts on some programming offered at the South Dakota Safety Council, so to be on the safe side, I'm going to recuse myself.
Sounds good. Thank you, Counselor Kylie. Counselor Starr, you can go ahead and explain that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It takes me a little bit. I'm a little slow on the uptake sometimes, but, you know, we heard from the Multicultural Center last week, one of their largest priorities, one of the two was driver's license testing in multiple languages. This starts that process and gives them that tool. As people are part of our community, whether they're immigrants, refugees, and are here legally, it was an important part. And I heard that message loud and clear, but I kind of put it to the back of my mind. And then this morning, as I was driving kids to school, I heard Jason Ball, the director of our Chamber of Commerce, saying this was one of the legislative priorities that our Chamber of Commerce is passing. And then it still didn't click with me. So then I heard Deborah Owens a couple hours later speaking about the same issue of how important it is for a workforce development issue for our community and our state to at least push this forward in a way that makes sense in a pilot program process. You know, with technology today, we've spent a lot of time talking about 5G technology and implementing things that are innovative. It takes seconds now to translate to hundreds of different languages or whatever it takes. It's not a major cost to translate and you don't have to provide interpreters. And I don't want to get fully into the full details, but to recommend that the legislature looks at a pilot program or the Department of Regulation that administers the driver's licensing test. So I think this is something that's vital for our community and vital for our state as well to move forward with this.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. Any other discussion on that item, counsel? Okay, a call for a vote on that amendment, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. So now our amended main motion is on the floor. Any other amendments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to amend the following as number 14. The Sioux Falls City Council places a high priority on safeguarding and conserving both quality and quantity of our state's natural amenities. Government, in partnership with business, should share the responsibility in conserving, enhancing, and protecting our water quality, air quality, and land. Given the substantial public and private investment to develop the River Greenway and the potential to develop a first-class amenity in our community, strategies to support a cleanup of the Big Sioux and its tributaries should be identified and implemented.
Second, Staley.
All right, motion by Starr, seconded by Staley. Counselor Starr.
Again, I think it's one of those things that the Big Sioux should be a big priority, a large priority of our community and is getting to that hour of the night, a big part of it. And that it does take a partnership, not only from local government, but state government in ways that we can do. And we have made a major investment as a community and a state and with federal dollars in our greenway. And I think this is a good direction to move.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on that item? Vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Back to the amended motion.
One more and I'll quit.
Counselor Starr, you're on.
I would move to amend as item number 15 with the following wording. The Sioux Falls City Council understands the growing diversity of our state's population and we embrace the opportunities that this diversity provides for a culturally and talent-rich community. We will work with the governor, the legislature, state agencies, and elected officials to develop efforts to engage and include all individuals. Legal immigration and refugee resettlement are proven and vital strategies to combat workforce shortages. We will also oppose initiatives which inappropriately sanction or discriminate against individuals or groups.
Second, Staley.
All right, motion by Starr and seconded by Staley. Counselor Starr on that one.
Yep, absolutely. This is another that comes from the chamber's legislative priorities. And again, I'm slow on the uptake sometimes, but I spent yesterday at lunch with Mr. Nelson, TJ, at LSS and really spent a lot of time talking about how important and vital immigrants and refugees are to our community and the way they make our community strong and that we should look at even increasing the number of immigrants. The numbers dropped dramatically. The folks at LSS really did a good job of talking about some of the myths that we have in our community of what refugees and immigrants provide to our community. Just a couple of years ago, we were at over 500 immigrants and refugees to our community and now we're less than 100. All right, I'm sorry, I apologize. It was a little over 200 is where they're at and they're not sure they'll fill that amount. There are employers in our community that have done a really great job of including refugees and immigrants into their business model. And I think it's important that this council states that we won't stand for discrimination against any individual or group.
Thank you, Counselor Starr. Any further discussion on that item? Counselor Erickson.
Not.
You pointed at me. All right. If seeing none, I'd call for a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Kylie?
Nightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. So we are on to the amended motion that's on the floor right now. And is there any other amendments to be made? Counselor Erickson?
Amendments, just a statement. The very thing that I was accused of being last minute and we just saw three added initiatives on here, which I fully supported and I think is fine. But what I ask is that that same standard for myself and other counselors be held, that we're consistent and fair, instead of criticizing one and accusing one of bringing something last minute. We've worked really hard as a full council, providing feedback to Jim. He has solicited feedback from all of us via email, via conversations. And this is a positive thing. We have moved in the right direction. I am proud of this council for the work that we have continued to do. We have met more than any other time that we have met in previous years. Counselor Urbanbach was not on any of the other task force, but a part of the council. And so I just want to make sure that the facts are out there. It's very clear that the same standard should be held for all. This is a great move for all of us. I'm excited for the legislative session and for us all to continue to build those relationships to get positive outcomes for not just Sioux Falls, but for our region, as we touch so many other cities with the borders of Sioux Falls. And so it's really about the region and not necessarily just Sioux Falls. And so I obviously support the efforts of everyone's feedback and the work that Jim David has done to really making sure everyone is heard and also attending those meetings that take place.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Staley.
Well, in a response to that, I'm going to say that, first of all, we always have the flexibility as elected officials to vote no and to approve something. But I also think there are different depths of understanding with things that come forward. So if we see something and we understand it, we approve of it, then we can vote yes at the time. If there's something that we feel we need a little more information on, which I still think we did on item number 12, and three of my colleagues agreed with me, then we feel free to do that as well. So please don't take it personally, Counselor Erickson, if we say we need a little more information because all of us have had people vote against us in the past. So that's part of the nature of, I guess, of the political scene, as they say.
I'm going to call for a vote on the main motion as amended, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Staley?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Nightzert?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item 38.
Item 38, a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to certain citizen boards, those being Mark Severson, Angeline Layven, Mike Begman, George Hamilton, Richard Scott, Paul Haig, Greg Jamison, Gregory Birch, Doug Swenson.
Counselors, any discussion on that? Counselor Staley?
Yes, I have some discussion. First of all, I'm so appreciative that Greg Jamison has been included. He's a fabulous person. He was a wonderful council member and so I'm so glad to see him being utilized in a civic manner again. George Hamilton, another fabulous person, whoever made that decision, if it was you, Mr. Mayor, fabulous move. And Mike Begman, who I've known for several years, a park board member, and I called him yesterday, I said, Mike, I'm going to make a comment. Please don't take it personally because I'm not going to vote against your appointment to this. But I'm going to clarify and state again that I think that we need to have designated places within our ordinance for the park board so that every district has a representative. He's from the Northwest District. His predecessor, Jason Reizendorfer, was also from the Northwest District. I appreciate that the mayor, and you did tell me, Mayor, during your campaign, you were going to work to do that, but I'd like to have that, again, put into an ordinance so that moving forward in our community, we've got diversification on the table at that park board. So.
Can I get a motion, Counselor Staley, to approve those, then?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second, Starr.
Second by Starr. Any other discussion? A vote on that, please.